I welcome you all to the September 27th, 2022 Meetings of the Pinehurst Village Council. Our first meeting today will be a regular meeting that'll be followed by a work session. As you'll see from the agendas that you have, or we'll see on the screens, we have quite a busy evening planned, and we're thankful that you're all here. Addressing this also to members of the public who may be watching on a live stream, if you're watching this meeting and you want to make any communication to the village council, please do that by sending an email to the village clerk. You can do that now or this evening, and that email address is publiccomments@vopnc.org. That's public comments with two Cs at vopnc.org. That communication will be directed to the village clerk, and the village clerk will circulate that to the council and appropriate staff after tonight's meeting over the next couple of days. Those of you who are here and plan to speak at one of our two hearings or in the public comments period tonight, I would make the following organizational clarifications for you. There are two public hearings tonight. Hearing number one will have to do with moratorium on our small area plans. If you wish to speak in that public hearing, you should sign the list that is for hearing number one, and only comments in that hearing number one about the small area plans. Hearing number two is a hearing with respect to the regulation of short-term rental properties in the village of Pinehurst. If you wish to speak on that subject, please sign hearing number two form, and I will go, as I will in hearing number one, down the list of names in order that you arrived and call you to speak. If you want to speak on any other subject beyond the two hearings tonight, at the end of the meeting, as we always do, there is a public comment period, and there is a separate list for that at the back of the room. So at the conclusion of the regular meeting, before we go to our work session, there will be an opportunity for those of you here to speak on any subject that you might wish to address to the council tonight. Having called the meeting to order and done a few organizational details, I will go on to item number two on our agenda, which is the invocation by Reverend John Kenyon. John, good evening.
Father in heaven, we invoke your presence this afternoon, tonight, as we discuss some sensitive and passionate subjects, as well as the mundane activities of governing this great region, this great town and village. Father, I pray for all present. I know that we're here for a reason, and I pray that we would balance our desire to express ourselves with civility, with understanding. May we be quick to listen and slow to speak. May we also be free to support and encourage one another. And I pray, Lord, for the men and women before me who will be making the decisions. It's a hard task, and I pray that you would grant them wisdom as they sort out all the myriad of issues, pros and cons of the various decisions they have before them. Lord, we thank you for their service. We thank you that they're willing to give us their time and energy and share their talents and ideas and thoughts and convictions with us, and we thank you that we live in a country that allows us to do that. Lord, I also pray that you would be present here and guiding the conversations, and that your name would be lifted up and glorified in all the discussions and the decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Kenyon. Would you rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We move on to agenda item number three, which is reports from the village manager and village council members. And I'll see, Jeff Sanborn, do you have any comments tonight, reports?
Thank you, John. I'd just like to comment on one thing, and that is Hurricane Ian. I know a lot of folks in there present tonight and that are watching online are probably watching that pretty closely, and so are we. Fortunately, right now, although it looks like the state of Florida is going to get hit pretty hard, and maybe some folks in southern Georgia as well, it looks like here in our area of North Carolina, it's most likely to be predominantly a rain event. Probably be a little breezy, but it doesn't look like we're necessarily going to see tropical storm force winds here. There is a slight chance of some tornadic activity here in North Carolina through the weekend as well. And the bad news is, it's going to be a big rain event, it looks like. So, you know, we've seen that happen quite often here, and I guess we'll watch and monitor that situation and see what we can do or what might be appropriate for us to do to prepare to deal with that big rain event this weekend. You know, fortunately, I guess, while it's going to, it looks like we're going to get several inches of rain, it's not all, it doesn't look like it's going to be all at once. It looks like it's going to be over about a three-day period, so maybe it won't be so bad. But we will continue to monitor the situation throughout the week, and if we need to get some more information out to you on the subject, we will.
Thank you, Jeff. I just have a couple of brief reports, comments I make tonight. Make note of the fact that Heritage Hall at the village chapel was completed and dedicated on September 18. We're glad to see that facility completed and enjoyed very much working with the chapel and its staff during that time. And then on the weekend, some of the council members and I were happy to attend the band fest at Pinehurst High School. There were, I think, 16 different marching bands from high schools around the center part of North Carolina there. It was quite an enthusiastic time, and some of you may have heard the music in your neighborhoods. I don't know, but it was a great event, and I thank our village clerk, Kelly, for pointing this out to us. She happens to be a booster of the band at Pinehurst, so thank you, Kelly, for that. Moving on into other comments, Jeff Morgan?
No comments, thank you.
Jane?
Yes, thank you. This afternoon, Mr. Sanborn and Darren Birch, our planning director and I, attended the Tri-Cities meeting, which is Pinehurst, Southern Pines, and Aberdeen, get together and talk about common issues. We had a very interesting presentation on affordable housing, which I think is probably just the beginning of quite a long discussion of how we can improve our resources there, but that was very interesting to hear. And the other thing I'd just like to mention is that the Moore County Registrar of Deeds has a new program to sign up for fraud alert, so that if, I have a home and I have a deed recorded in the Moore County land records, so I signed up with my name. I put my name in on their email, on their website, and I put my email and my name, so that if anybody files some kind of a document with my name on it, I will get a message right away. That won't fix the problem. I'll have to call the police or go to a lawyer or something to sort out whatever it is, but at least they'll know about it. And the program's free, so if you go to the Moore County website, the Registrar of Deeds, and it's pretty easy, even I was, I mean, I'm not able to do any of that stuff, but even I was able to sign up.
I read a lot about fraud in the area, and so this is a very helpful program to use.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jane. Patrick?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item I wanted to mention. I attended earlier this week a meeting of the Partners in Progress and the Moore County Chamber of Commerce, where they discussed and reviewed the results of the 2022 Moore County Employer Survey Results. This was conducted by the National Business Research Institute and was jointly sponsored by Moore County Chamber, Moore County Schools, Partners in Progress, and Sandhills Community College. And they were seeking feedback from Moore County employers in four areas: recruitment, retention, and hiring; training, skills, and education; business outlook, and satisfaction with the business environment. They gave us an overview, and then we could request a breakout by our community, which I did, and we received them regarding Pinehurst businesses. And I'll share with you briefly these results. Number one, Pinehurst businesses are more optimistic about the future than businesses located in other parts of Moore County. Pinehurst businesses are more satisfied with Moore County as a place to operate a business. The concerns was a lack of technical skills needed and gaps in salary and wage expectations that were often cited by Pinehurst businesses as barriers having the greatest impact on their ability to hire employees in the last 12 months. Pinehurst businesses indicated job shadowing and internships as the best ways to generate career interest at a higher rate than businesses in other locations. And finally, Pinehurst businesses are less concerned about supply chain disruptions and increasing operating costs and are more concerned with their ability to attract talent than businesses in other locations. So as more information comes about from the results of this survey and thoughts are given by Partners in Progress and the other organizations, I'll share them with the council and our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia?
Thank you, John. On a lighter note, the pilot this Sunday on the front page featured a little story about a video that was done by some residents of Moore County, and there's a little video you can find on YouTube, and it's called Traffic Circle Blues. So far, 2,700 people have looked at it. So if you haven't seen it, it's fine, and I appreciate Moore County residents who have brought attention to a very important local issue. So again, just go to YouTube and search for Traffic Circle Blues. Thank you.
It's funny. It's good. I'm sure many of you have seen it. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, it's a motion to approve our consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that a council member wishes to pull out or have for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll approve, move to approve all items listed and considered routine on the consent agenda.
That's a motion by Councilmember Pazella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bosch. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. With an item number five, which is an easement request from Duke Energy. Jeff, would you like to introduce that?
Yeah, I guess I can make some quick remarks. Mark's moving into the microphone. We also have David McNeil and some other representatives from Duke here to answer questions, and this is pursuant to a request for the village to allow an easement to extend a utility line from an existing line that's on our West Pinehurst Park property to go across the road to serve a residential development.
Mark, why don't you make your comments first, and then we'll probably have some questions for our friends from Duke Energy. Thank you.
Yes, as Jeff mentioned, we did get the request from Duke for this easement. I met on site with Kristen Ganey and Billy Stutz, who are here with David McNeil tonight. We looked at the site, looked at the existing infrastructure. What they would do is need to install a guy wire on an existing pole that's on the property adjacent to the parking lot, and then it would go directly across Chicken Plant Road to the homes that they would be serving, that I believe are new construction scheduled for November, if I'm not mistaken. So we looked at the site outside of having to clear about a 30-foot easement with a couple pine trees and some scrub oaks. Really, the only impact to us is going to be that guy wire, which does not appear to be in any way of our future or existing facilities on the site. So after looking at that with them, I feel comfortable that granting the easement will not impact our future use of the property. Kelly, could you possibly go to either the right-of-way map or the responses? There's another, there's two maps at the last page of the response to the questions. Might be helpful just to have that on screen. So that just gives you a little aerial view of where this is. You can see the existing pole at the bottom of that top photograph circled in red. That's the pole where the guy wire would go to, and then you can see it's a direct shot across Chicken Plant to the other side of the road. So with that, I'll turn it over to David, and if you have any comments or if council has questions, they'll be happy to respond.
David, would you like to introduce yourself, please, and your team, and make whatever comments you wish? I think we'll have some questions for you, but please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Strickland and members of the village council, it's a pleasure to be with you today. I'm David McNeil. I'm the district manager for Duke Energy based in Aberdeen, and I've got with me two of our engineers, Mark Stutz and Kristen Ganey, and we're happy to appear before you today. Mark summarized the project very well, and as you can see on the map, the new line indicated is the only work that we propose to do. No additional poles are needed to be installed on the village of Pinehurst property. We'll be attaching 140-foot line extension down and a down guy at the existing pole. And Duke Energy will be paying for all of this infrastructure that is being put in place to serve this customer, and I'm happy, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just preliminary from me, and in case residents in the audience don't recognize this land, the Village Jones, 67 acres, I think it is, on Chicken Plant Road, which is out west down Linden Road, and it's what we call West Pinehurst Park, although we're not doing very much with the property at this point in time. This request has to do with taking a power line wire across basically the part of the parking area, I think, David, in our, in our land, and then going across the road to tie into a customer. Is that correct? It's just one home that's being constructed, I guess?
That is correct, and this is the most efficient approach and is least disruptive to the village of Pinehurst property, but it enables us to serve that customer.
Okay, all right, all right. Now, there were some questions that were asked, and I know, Mark, maybe, did you want to draw our attention to some of these questions, or should we just go straight into comments from the council members?
I think it's probably best just to go to questions if you have specific ones.
Are there questions from village council members to Mr. McNeil and his team on this? Lydia, did you?
Thank you. It's my understanding that four homes are going to be built across Chicken Plant Road. Is that, I'm having a hard time reconciling the one home in the four homes.
The property is, I think it was about 20 acres at the time. It has been subdivided out. We are just trying to get power across the road. We will set the pole on that property at 910 Chicken Plant Road. Once we get that power there, we would not need you guys for anything after that. We could go along that side of the road to get to the other properties if they develop.
Okay, okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Questions from council? Pat?
I have one question. You said it's 140-foot line? Did you look at placing that one line underground?
Well, we're looking at serving this customer in the most cost-effective manner, and that's really keeping all of our customers in mind. We try to keep our cost as low as possible. It is an option to put a line underground. The cost for doing that is much more expensive.
What are the two, what are the two costs?
To answer your question, we design on the most cost-effective design. For us, it's overhead. In order for us to go underground, we would have to go from the pole all the way across the road to that neighboring property, which would require us to get an encroachment from the DOT to go under the road, and that cost is passed on to the customer out of pocket.
Could you please speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Say a little closer to the mic.
So it's a most cost-effective design to go underground from the pole to that person across the road to their property is, we have to get an easement from the state, encroach into their property. We have to bore 10 feet under the ground, under their highway, minimum, and it's 100% cost passed on to this customer. So they could rack up $10,000 plus thousand in cost to do this.
So it's $10,000 to do the line underground?
Pretty much roughly around $30 a foot.
$30 a foot, okay.
And there's no cost to the customer for the overhead, which is the proposed service. But if the, if the village wanted it to go underground on their, on your property and you wanted to pay for it, that is an option. But we're looking at the most cost-effective for all parties and feel this is the best approach.
Do you ever factor in anything else other than cost when you're doing this? The aesthetics?
Oh, yes.
Safety?
Well...
Those type of things?
We did. You know, we also factor in the disruption to the property. By going directly across the road, we're limiting the number of trees that will be affected, and if you went down the roadway a little bit to cut across, you would have to affect all those trees along the roadway. And so we also look at the most efficient method, not just the most cost-effective, but the most efficient to be the least disruptive for the property.
This idea of going underground, and you and I have talked about this before on occasion, David, and other places. I know it's expensive, but seems like this is a, you know, pretty short spot, short distance there, and this might be something that the company could assist with as far as the cost of doing that?
Company provides 100%. We pay 100% for the overhead line, but for us to incur that cost, then all of the customers would bear that cost eventually, and that, we, in our opinion, that wouldn't be fair. And so the approach is always that the requesting party that wants it underground, if that increases the cost, they would bear that cost.
Now, as I think Lydia was talking, once you get across the road to that one house, you may provide power up and down the road further, if to the degree they're building lots along the road. Is that, is that true? So you might be marching down the road with additional lines in the future, once you get across?
Go down the road, we have to get easement from the people we cross. So if they say no, then where we're at is where we're at with the line. So it's just all, all in getting easement, once we get across the road, to continue on down, on down to serve the adjacent properties.
Yeah, so if you, you put one pole across the road now, and the other three lots or four lots, there would be a pole for each one of those lots, is that right?
Possibly. Whatever would be required, just as everyone in this room has power to their home, and whatever was the most efficient way of getting power to them.
I get that.
Same process.
Right.
I guess the idea about going underground there and potentially in other parts of that road is that, just as we're talking earlier, we have a storm coming, and you always warn the community very well, you know, when storms are coming, lines may go down. So my thought is, well, why don't we start putting some of these lines underground and avoiding the probability of an ice storm or a rainstorm or a hurricane that we're going to, you know, have lines down. So to me, it's an aesthetic thing on the one hand, but it's also a safety factor on the other, and I, maybe we can continue to talk about how this can, can work in the community over time.
Well, a lot of time, a new development or a subdivision goes in, and you'll put the lines underground, and that cost will be factored into the cost of the homes in that subdivision. So there is opportunity there. When lines already exist overhead, you're talking about an additional expense, and we want to provide safe, reliable, affordable, and increasingly clean energy for all of our customers, and that cost factor is very important to us. We want the rates to be as low as possible for our customers.
Yeah, okay. Jane, you may have some questions on this, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just one more round on the overhead versus underground. It may be less expensive to put the lines in overhead to start with, but, but boy, if you put them underground, you don't have to worry about power outages the same way, because I've lived with it both ways, with my house being served with overhead lines and underground utilities, and you don't have the same problem with power outages. You don't have to have trees trimmed all the time, and tree trimming can be an issue, and it's an expense. And if you've got four houses that are going in across the street, couldn't the cost of bringing it across the road be shared by all four of them? In which case, it's, it's not quite the same type of number for each of the houses. I just, I mean, at some point, it, I think it's pretty much generally recognized that underground utilities are better than overhead. The overhead ones look awful, and they're, they're subject to, you know, weather and wind and trees falling on them and all the rest of it.
Well, and I can appreciate there's definitely advantages. Once power lines are underground, there are advantages.
Oh, yeah.
They're not immune to outages. You can have flooding issues. You can have a fault with an underground line.
It's much less.
But it is. Those underground lines that you speak of in neighborhoods are still eventually connected to overhead lines from the power coming from the generating plants. So there, but, but you're right, at the local level, once they're underground, then there's less of a challenge there. Again, it's a cost factor, and if a community or an individual chooses to bear that cost, but for all of our customers, to keep our rates as low as possible for all customers...
I'm disappointed to hear that the company doesn't have a program to start putting new lines underground and sharing the cost of the initial cost of putting them in amongst all the new customers, so that eventually their long-term maintenance costs will be lower. But the question that I actually wanted to ask you about was the language of the easement itself, and this easement document looks to me to be written generically and very, very broadly, and it gives the utility company quite a bit of wiggle room, shall we say, to change its mind or whatever. Maybe it's a sort of a one-size-fits-all document that can be put in anywhere. But this is a 67-acre parcel of land that the village owns, and technically, this document says you can put your easement anywhere you want and move it around wherever you want on our land. And if we just had maybe had an acre or something, that'd be one thing, but we've got a big 67-acre parcel there. So I really would like this to be narrowed down. I'd like there to be a Schedule A, which is a map that shows where on the land the easement will be located, because we don't have that right now. And there's, you've got the two pictures that you, we should not show on the screen, this one that's the photograph and then the drawing, but those are not going to be attached to this document, either one of them, are they? I don't believe they are. And in any event, they don't give enough information to tell where the easement would go. Second of all, I'd like to make sure that we include in this easement the area that is entitled to be benefited by the new service. So is this line that's going across just going to serve one house? Is it going to serve four houses, as Mrs. Bosch had heard? Is it going to serve all of Pinewild Phase Four or the whole ETJ? I mean, I think it's fair to us that you put into the easement what is the benefited area. And in addition, I'd like to know who are the incumbent local exchange carriers? What kind of work do they do? How, it's, that term is capitalized, so it must be defined somewhere. It's not defined in this document, but I think we're entitled to know who, besides Duke Energy or its successors, is going to be using this easement, so we know who's using our land. And some of the paragraphs are very broad, and they give Duke Energy the right to say, well, we want a 35-foot wide easement, and the facilities are going to go down the middle of the easement, but, but we also want to be able to extend over that 30-foot line and move the 30-foot line around and, and tell the village what it can and can't do outside of the easement area. The paragraph that troubles me the most, I think, is paragraph eight, which is kind of a kitchen sink provision, and which says that the, the grantee, Duke Energy, has any and all other rights and benefits that it wants to have in its sole discretion. I'd like to narrow that down, too, and I know in the responses to my questions about the verbiage of this document, that there was immediate, oh, well, we, we can change sole discretion to reasonable discretion. I'd like to start there, but I'd, I'd like to make sure that, that the document accurately says, here's where the easement's going to go, here's what it's for, here's who gets to use it, and here's who's going to be served by it, so that we don't have a surprise 10 years from now.
Well, and thank you.
Sorry to take so long.
Thank you for your comments and questions. I agree that the easement language is, covers a broad range of work that our company encounters, and in this, we have defined specifically what will be involved in this easement and what it will be serving. You mentioned the rest of your development, all the other acres, and in a case like that... rest of your development, all the other acres. And in a case like that, if the village came to us and said, we want to develop all of our property, we would have a, a project planner, one of our local engineers, meet with you, and decide how you want to develop it. And that would determine where the electrical infrastructure would go. But until you get to that point, that wouldn't be defined, because you may want to develop it in a lot of different ways. But there is going to be a line going across the street, and a pole put in place there. And then as additional customers develop their property and need power, we would then address what would be the most efficient way to serve them. And so we would come back, this is, easement is really just giving us the opportunity to do exactly what we've said, and nothing else. And we would come back to you if there's a proposal for additional, anything additional work-wise.
This document doesn't tell the story. I'd like a document that tells the basics of the story. I don't, I can't support this document. I have no problem providing energy from the poles that are on our land across the street to the folks who want to build a home, a home. No problem at all. But, but this document seems to me to be too loosey-goosey. We, we need to put in, where's the easement going to go? Where's the land that's going to be benefited? We need to tame down that paragraph eight, and we need to identify who else is going to be able to use it. Can't be too hard to put a Schedule A on an easement document, can it?
Schedule A is a normal, isn't it a normal document? Or when do you use that and when not, David and your team here?
Well, and that's where, if that's the desire, we can get with our right-of-way easement folks and, and address that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't Mike Newman review and approve this?
I'm sorry, what?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're asking if Mike Newman, the village attorney, looked at this? I, I don't know. He probably did at some point.
Mark Wagner's nodding.
Yeah, Mike Newman did review it and had no concerns.
Thank you.
That being the case, and Jeff Morgan, you may have some questions, too. Go ahead.
Not so many questions. A lot of questions been asked. You have a, individuals building a house wants to get power. And let's keep it in perspective. Certainly, poles going across the road with wires on there, it's reasonable. They want to cut two trees, they also want to get some clearance on there. I understand the discussions about underground, but that's not what's going at this point in time. I'm not willing to spend village funds to put these wires underground. I'm certain that the people who want to have power at their house don't want to spend the extra cost to put the wires underground. You've got a company that's pretty reputable, that has been doing this for decades. And let's just keep it in perspective, okay? Our village attorneys have looked at this before. I have no problem supporting this at this point in time.
With respect to the Schedule A, which I think is one of the key points here, are you suggesting that could be added to this, this document, and we would at least have that? Would that help, Jane, so solve the question?
I'm sorry.
So if, if, if we had the Schedule A attached, if they could do that, would that help solve your?
That's a starting point. I had a couple other things.
I heard it. Yeah, I heard it. All right. I don't know, David, is that something that's, can be done within the timeframe?
I don't know. I'll have to go back to our right-of-way and easement folks to, to ask them that question.
Okay.
I certainly understand the desire to protect the, the village. And we all have that, that motivation to make sure we're doing that. Let's just keep it in perspective as to when we're protecting the village and what is overreach, okay? As to when we're actually now causing more problems than we're helping.
My suggestion is going to be, if you could discuss the Schedule A, which I think, from my point of view, is kind of a key document here for questions that are being asked, we might be able to approve this tonight, subject to your inquiry about that, and hopefully being able to arrange for that to be attached. Is that, is that internally possible, do you think, or what? Engineers?
I'm happy for us to go back and, and huddle with our folks. The timing of getting back to you, I'm not sure.
Well, we have five council members here, and we all may have some different approaches to this. But would it be, would one approach be that you would make that inquiry for the Schedule A, right? And we might approve that on a contingent basis, if the council members agree. And if you would do your best efforts to have that arranged, I think that might be helpful to what we, what we have here. So the point would be, we could approve this contingent upon that Schedule A, and you may take a little time to do that. Is there any other time sensitivity here that I'm not remembering about doing this project? Do we have a few months or a few days or something before the home is?
I think the customer was trying to move in the end of November. So we do have a little bit of time.
End of November, is that right? Okay.
In the agreement with right-of-way as well, to set that pole at that property, because it's on the property line, we have to have agreement from the neighbor next door as well. But we have options with that as well. You know, if, if that customer doesn't allow us to go right there, we would move the pole down just a tad on their property. But we are still in agreement with right-of-way at this time. So it is, it is kind of time-sensitive for the November.
But it sounds like that that approach would be something we could certainly support.
Okay.
If you wanted to do it with that contingency.
All right. Would that be acceptable to council members?
Yeah.
To do, to do that as part of this process? All right.
One question on, on the, on the math. You'd said it's a 140-foot line?
Yeah.
And it's $30 a foot. Is that what you said?
That's probably an approximate. Lot, lot of factors can come into play there.
I understand. That, that's $4,200 as opposed to the $10,000 number. That's why I was, that, that...
That's just for the, boy, that's not counting the conduit, all the labor, and all that stuff. So it, then you got your tax, and you gross up, and on top of that. So it, it adds up quick, you know?
I, I certainly would like to see these people not have to spend Thanksgiving by candlelight. So I'm, you know, prone to, if you can fulfill the requests that were made by the mayor, I, I'd be supportive. But I will say, I'm a little disappointed that Duke doesn't have a little bit more of a, a program to gradually place, especially when there's a new home or new construction, some of these utility lines underground. I mean, it just seems so forward-thinking. We know what Pacific Gas and Electric has decided to do about utility lines underground after that big fire out there out west. And, but you have your own company, and you do things your way.
Well, and I can appreciate that. And we, we're open to exploring all options, but we're very sensitive to keeping our cost as low as possible. Our customers want us to do that.
I, I know you do that, because I, I think about that every time I get my electric bill. And I'm sure all, everybody here in the village appreciates that also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think then, if we have an understanding about Schedule A, we could make this motion contingent upon that. And I would hold signing the document until you came back with whether you can do that or not. And we'd have to revisit it, I guess, if you can. But hopefully you can get...
Sounds like it's something we can do.
Okay.
And we'll take steps to do that.
Okay. All right. Then I think if we could amend this motion slightly, just by saying contingent upon the inclusion of Exhibit A, or can we put that here? Jane, you want to work on that?
I might suggest some language that describes what Exhibit A is. Graphical depiction of the easement, something like that.
But he says they can cooperate, and, but there was a little uncertainty there. My concern is getting into the mechanics of this and finding out, it can't be done. It, to do it is going to cause a delay in these homeowners getting into their home. So that, that's my, Mike Newman approved it as is. If we can do this without causing delay to the, to the people trying to get into the new home, great. But I'm just not sure, based on what I'm hearing from you guys, that it can be done in time.
I think...
Well, now, I also, it's been pointed out to me that in our response to you, to the first question, talking about the easement being broad, and this is how we reference the property, the only way to really change this language is to have an Exhibit A at the requesting customer's expense. And so, again, that's something our right-of-way people do. I'm, I don't have that expertise, but I see that. And so want to be sensitive to that, that there may be a cost. We can get an estimate if...
Well, what's the approximate cost of this Exhibit A? I mean...
I don't know, but we can follow back up with you and make you aware. And then if y'all decide, yes, that's something we'd like to pursue.
Might, it might involve survey work.
Say again, Jeff?
Might involve survey work.
Survey work.
Surveyor.
No calls.
So remind me again, what are we accomplishing by this, by the Schedule A?
Jane?
We're, we're, we're trying to get a document that gives permission to do a specific thing that's being requested to be done, and that doesn't give carte blanche free rein for Duke Energy to go all over our entire 67-acre parcel, because we don't have any specific information about where the easement's going to go, or what it's exactly going to be for.
Okay. I think that risk is very low. I'm not a lawyer. When I read this, it seemed like it was fairly straightforward. We had our village lawyer read it, and they didn't have any problems with it. We've got a reputable company that really doesn't want to spend a lot of money going all over our 67 acres. We're cutting two trees, and we're cutting down some trees to get a wire across. We've got a, a citizen that is trying to put in a house and have this in there by November. This is absolute overreach. Just accept what's going on, and let's move forward with this, please.
David, you had a, we talked earlier about the broadness, a little bit about the broadness of this, and whether you could do other things without our approval. Would you address that point again? I think you mentioned earlier, just wanted to get that on.
Yes. Yeah, I want to make it clear that our plan is to only do what we've described, and nothing else. And if we were to want to do anything additional on your property, we would come to you and make that request, and go through the same process. So there, there will not be, it'll all be following the process.
Okay. All right.
So just really approaching you to make the request to, to run this line without having to add a pole to your property. But, you know, the, the current pole has an easement that goes with it. And so we're just in the process of wanting to, to direct a power line to get to that new customer.
Okay. All right. Then I'm not, well, the Schedule A just gives us information that you think you can provide. But other than that, I'm not too concerned, personally, about the, the other concerns that we had here. But I'd like to see that if you can, I would just leave it as a contingency. If you can arrange that, that would be great.
We'll get a cost estimate for you for what that will involve, and then follow back up with you. And if y'all direct us to, we'd be happy to, to do that work.
Now, not to reverse the idea that I just mentioned about how that Schedule A would work, or whether you can do it. If council is of a mind, we could approve this, we could, with that understanding, we could approve this motion tonight. And you would have that, but you could come back to us with the possibility of having that Schedule A. Would that be conceivable?
That would be fine.
Is that reasonable for council? All right. Is there a motion on, on the table then for this request?
But you need an amended motion, right?
Well, I move to authorize the mayor to designate enter an agreement with Duke Energy Progress LLC in the amount of $1 granting Duke Energy perpetual and non-exclusive easement on certain property described in the instrument recorded in deed book 2233, page 113, Moore County Register of Deeds, as written.
That's a motion by Councilmember Morgan. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. If you work on that contingency, as we agreed, that would be very helpful, David. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good luck during the storm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on into item number six, which is a motion, please, to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number one, which would be small area plans. Is there a motion, please?
Yeah, I, I move to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number one, moratorium extension in small area plans.
That's a motion by Councilmember Pizawa. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move into public hearing number one, extension of the moratorium on our small area plans. Do we have a list of hearing speakers for the hearing?
I said they're not.
All right. And, and Darren will, will open the hearing. And you are ready to make your...
I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to open, this is ordinance 22, number, number 2214. The purpose of this public hearing is to take public comments on the possible extension of the moratorium currently in place in the two small area plan areas of Village Place and Piner South. Ordinance 2214 proposes to extend the moratorium an additional 120 days to expire in February 2023, and may be terminated early by council. The original nine-month moratorium, 2103, was adopted on February 10, 2021, and we've extended it four times thus far. The, the original, well, the intent of the moratorium is to allow for, for the small area plans for Village Place and Piner South to be developed and approved. Our initial estimation, which was, which was a bit off in ordinance 2103, is that the plans and form-based codes would be completed by fall of 2021. Oops, I'm What has been completed thus far? The Village Place Small Area Plan has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Village Council. Piner South, the Piner Small, South Small Area Plan has, has been approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. It is, is on tonight's agenda, and I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution on that tonight. But council will be taking action, hopefully taking action later on in the evening on that. The Planning and Zoning Board is holding special work sessions on Village Place Form-Based Code and Zoning Code Updates. And we've been placing those items in Novus Agenda. We actually have a, a special meeting scheduled tomorrow to continue the, the work on the Form-Based Code and Zoning Code Updates for Village Place. So you go to Novus Agenda for the work session tomorrow and see that material. The Planning and Zoning Board will not take up the, the form, most, Form-Based Codes and Zoning Updates to Piner South SAP until we actually get it approved by council. Regardless of whether the moratorium is extended, or whether it, or whether it's lifted, work will continue until the FBCs and zoning codes, codes are developed and taken to a public hearing. That is, that is the intent, is to get those plans drafted, or those codes drafted.
Right.
These are the two exhibits. The exhibit on the left shows the Piner South Small Area Plan, and Exhibit B shows the Village Place Small Area Plan. And that ends my presentation.
We have known this moratorium request would come to us tonight. We've, there's been discussion at earlier meetings. Are there any comments from council with respect to this request for the moratorium extension that we can ask for Darren tonight? Questions?
Yeah, just one, did we consult with council on the ability to extend this moratorium?
Yes.
Council had no objection?
Well, I, I can't speak for all of council.
Well, I'm not, I mean, council, I mean council.
Oh, Mike Newman.
Big old council.
Um, yes, he, yes, we did.
What, what?
We, we can extend it.
Thank you.
Other questions of Darren respecting this issue?
How much of this delay has been the council not making a decision?
We've been, we've had several setbacks along the way. It's not just, it hasn't just been not council not making a decision on certain, certain aspects, but, you know, we've had some issues with, with not being able to move forward, just because we've had a lack of staffing capacity within the department. We, but we've always been moving forward on some aspect of the plan. We've just never been able to start working the Piner South plan, because we haven't had a final, a final approval of that plan to allow us to move forward on the form-based codes.
Thank you. What, just for my edification, what does a moratorium mean for a property owner?
A moratorium means that if, say you're a vacant piece of property, the moratorium will not generally allow you to do any development on that property.
So basically, if I'm an owner of a piece of...
So basically, if I'm an owner of a piece of property, we extend this moratorium from 19 months to 23 months, I still cannot develop the property as I purchased it and wanted to do?
That's correct.
Okay.
With some exceptions.
And we're also at a point where this council has not moved forward on a lot of this stuff where it could have. We could have been much more efficient in doing this. So as we vote on this, please remember, we are keeping people from being able to use their property as property rights dictate.
Okay.
I do not support an extension of the moratorium.
I agree with the advice from our village council that it's appropriate that we can do this. I think we should remind ourselves that we approved the Village Place Plans four to one before this council, and I think eventually we're going to be able to approve Village South. I think we should be careful and cautious. There are no mulligans when you approve these type of plans. You've got to hit the ball in the fairway the first time. And I think it's important for our village residents to believe that we are taking every precaution to make sure we make the right decision. And I think we did that in the Village Place area, and I was glad to be in the majority on that vote. Thank you.
Darren, clarifying the abilities, as council member Morgan was asking, my recollection of this was that any property owner who had plans in place that had been submitted to the planning department at the time we put the moratorium in place could continue at their discretion, I think. They could either continue or they could wait, whatever they felt they wished to do on that. But if their plans were in place and a property owner had an idea of what they wanted to do with the property, that we've approved those, they're carrying on. I think Trotter Hills was involved in this for sure, and there were lots of projects ongoing even now there that were allowed under the moratorium. Isn't that correct?
That's correct, and there's some exceptions to allow for building alterations, things like that that have been approved within both Village Place and Pinehurst South.
Right, okay, thank you for that. Other questions for Darren on this? And checking the clerk one more time, there are no public, nobody signed up? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to adjourn public hearing number one and re-enter the regular meeting.
That's a motion by council member Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pizella. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have closed the hearing number one. Is there council discussion or a motion on this moratorium extension?
I'd just like to say one thing, and that is that even when council has completed its review of the small area plan for Pinehurst South, it's still going to be necessary, as it is for Village Place Small Area Plan, for the Form-Based Codes to be developed. So we're not, we're not just extending the moratorium for council decision on Pinehurst South, but also in order to give time to complete the work on the Form-Based Codes. So I think it's quite necessary. And I'm ready to make a motion if there is.
Is there any other discussion from council with respect to this matter?
I think I made my position pretty clear yesterday in email, but I can't support it. And looking at the statute, looking at some materials from the school of government, looking at the last video, even looking at the staff memo, that I'm not even certain that the days, the time being requested is sufficient. I just, you know, I can't support it.
All right. However, village attorney has approved this moratorium and we've researched that, what we can do and what we can't do. I think we're within our grounds there.
One question. You're not suggesting that we should provide a longer extension?
Oh, no. No, the last time, and I did go back and look at the video and asked Darren, let me see what my notes say. Last, you know, first moratorium, initial moratorium, I was fine. First extension, I was fine. Second extension, I said, Darren, I'm getting to the place of saying no more. And Darren's response was, we wish you were further along, but we're staffed up now and we think we can do it. So, you know, apprehension with the first extension, real apprehension with the second extension, and now this is third extension, and I just can't go along with it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 2214, extending the moratorium on real estate development in specified geographic areas of Village Place and Pinehurst South for an additional 120-day period from the date of expiration, thus to expire on February 3, 2023.
That's a motion by council member Hoagman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Pizella. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Are there opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Two opposed, three in favor. The motion carries. The moratorium is extended. Move on into item number 10. There are motion to move to a public hearing on public hearing number two.
I'll move to recess the regular meeting and enter public hearing number two, amending Pinehurst Development Ordinance.
That's a motion by council member Hoagman. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second by council member Bosch. Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move into a public hearing with respect to short-term rentals in the villages of Pinehurst. I have a few kind of organizational comments I'll make, and Darren will then make his report. I have three, two sign-up forms here. So, and this one Kelly was just brought back, the second page. So that's complete and we'll go by name. A few organizational details and a kind of an update before I ask Darren to give his report. That report will be followed by public comments according to these lists, and then the council will have a discussion period after that. Just a reminder on rules and procedures. We expect comments to be about three minutes, please. We're not expecting any signs to be displayed. I don't see any in the room at this point, and I'd ask you to be courteous, and we, hopefully we won't have applause after any of the comments by one speaker or another. Overall, though, the purpose of this hearing is to receive the report from staff regarding the Planning and Zoning Board's meeting of September 1st and 6th regarding STR regulation and to hear comments from the public about STR regulation in the villages of Pinehurst. Council will have discussion time tonight after the hearing is closed. I'd like to also clear up a couple of continuing misconceptions in the public, which I heard in listening to the Planning and Zoning Board discussions and public comments there, and including certain reports in the media since those meetings have been held. I make these following comments, some of which may persuade you to change your comments tonight as you go along, but that's your discretion. First point is this, the village council will not be taking a decision on this program or this regulation tonight. We're going to hear your comments, listen to the staff report, talk amongst ourselves, and we will not be making a final decision tonight. My expectation is that that decision will be made, however, in the month of October. Second point, the current council has never recommended a ban on short-term rentals in all Pinehurst residential zoning districts. Similarly, nor did the village government ever suggest to the public in the past that there were any restrictions on STRs, that there were no restrictions on STRs, thereby encouraging STR development. Let me repeat that. There was never a time when village government, best to my knowledge, suggested to the public in the past that there were no restrictions on STRs, thereby encouraging development. Similarly, the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, PDO as currently written, does not define STRs or restrict them in single-family residential neighborhoods. And finally, under state law, municipalities in North Carolina are not allowed to register STRs nor put a cap on the number of STRs under state law. There seem to be continuing concern and suggestions about some of these points, so I just wanted to try to make that as clear as we could. Having said that, I will ask the head of our Planning and Inspections Department to make his report, and upon the conclusion of that report, we'll take your public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will attempt to make this quick. This will be quicker than my normal presentations.
Just make it good and accurate. You don't need to make it quick or long.
All right. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept public comments on proposed multiple text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance, PDO, to address short-term rentals, home stays, and permit revocation. This public hearing was duly noticed as required by the statute. Public hearing, a public hearing was also held by the Planning and Zoning Board on September 1, 22, and noticed as required by our PDO. The Planning and Zoning Board, we did continue that meeting to 9/6. Planning and Zoning Board has made recommendations on the proposed amendments and found the proposed amendments to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Board's recommendations have been included in exhibit B as Novus Agenda. So if you look at that exhibit, that is how the ordinance would look if we incorporated all of the Planning and Zoning Board's changes into it. NCS, NCGS 160D 604B specifies that the governing body is not bound by the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board. The Planning and Zoning Board is an advisory board. So the background, concerns surrounding an unregulated land use, short-term rentals, and its impacts on the single-family neighborhood quality of life have been expressed over the past several months to council. As you can recall, I think we started embarking on this process, what, January-ish, sometime in that time period. Responding to these concerns, council initiated policy changes to address concerns over single-family residential neighborhoods' quality of life. They started with doing municipal code amendments, ordinance 2208, which addressed such things as overnight parking, unruly gatherings, things like that. Then we started to work on drafting PDO amendments with staff. That is actually the subject of this public hearing, was the subject of the Planning and Zoning Board's review. That public hearing was held on 0901 and the meeting was continued to 0906. P&amp;Z Action on 0906, their effect was to recommend STRs be permitted in single-family zoning districts as well as neighborhood commercial, office professional, village cottage professional, and village residential. There were some minor edits and clarifications on SR9, Special Requirement 9, which is really the, what would create the standards for short-term rental, the development standards for short-term rentals, and they did propose an additional standard proposed to requiring posting of owners, owner contacts, and rules within the unit. For sake of time and because we are handling a lot of, there was a lot to handle in a shorter amount of time for the planning commission, planning zoning board, they did not make a recommendation on the amendments related to home stays, and they wanted to focus just clearly on the STR-related amendments. They're willing to come back and talk about the home stay issue, but they wanted to focus on getting something back as quick as they could to the village council in that regard. So the proposed amendments. The proposed amendments are to the following sections of the PDO. Section 4, Public Hearings, Permits, and Approvals. What this code amendment does is it establishes a permit revocation, not just for STR permits, but for any permit that's been issued. We don't currently have that within the regulations. Section 8.5, Table of Permitted Uses and Special Requirements. This table is where we start to put the Xs on the table, and the districts where the STRs may be permitted, and you'll see that table in a couple slides. Section 8.6, Special Requirements, SR to the Table of Permitted uses, permitted in special uses and special requirements. This is the creation of SR9, Short-Term Rental. Again, this is the development standards that would be in place for all short-term rentals. And there's 15 development standards as currently proposed. There'll be 16 if you include the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, and I'm not going to go over them all, but it's really, it's a special development requirements that would apply to STRs where permitted by right, requiring development permit for existing and new, and provisions for revocation, amortizing in certain districts, and requiring STRs non-conforming to come into compliance or cease operations by a certain date. Then we had section 10.2, defining short-term rentals and home stays so that may be regulated by the PDO as defined. So here are the proposed definitions, short-term rental and home stay. Again, the Planning and Zoning Board did not make a recommendation on home stays. Proposed amendments to Table 8.5, this is the table where, once you get seated on this table, this is where you start to look at where they're permitted as permitted uses. So if you look at this table, that the council had proposed, if you see the red Xs, these are the districts in which the council had proposed short-term rentals would be allowed as permitted uses. What we had found out, or as part of our Planning and Zoning Board discussion, what we'd have to add as well is this SR to make clear that if you have a short-term rental in a residential multiple-family district, or VMU district, or the VC, that an SR, that SR9 that we're creating would be applied. So we just have to add that, to make sure we add that in the final ordinance. The home stays, again, the council, we were looking for a recommendation on this. We were not able to get a recommendation on home stays. Proposed amendments to zoning, the special requirements, SR to the Table of Permitting Special Uses, and this is where we create the short-term rental. So SR9 creates the short-term rental special requirement. By doing that, we are dislodging the existing SR in that place, and we're moving that down to SR21, which is banks, credit unions, financial services, and professional services. This is the 15 special requirements. I am, again, not going to go into all these because they're all, they're all in the exhibits in the ordinance, so I'm just going to breeze through these. Same thing. This is the permit, this is the permit, this is section 4.2, the permit revocation. Again, this is, this allows us to potentially, potentially, we don't have to revoke it, but we may revoke a permit under certain circumstances. The planning recommendations, Planning and Zoning Board recommendations are shown in exhibit B. We had actually broken the amendments up into various actions to see where there's consensus on some of these various code provisions, short-term rental definition, permit revocation, and SR9, there was a consensus achieved by the Planning and Zoning Board to support all, it was unanimously approved for all these. SR9 with the edits, you know, they proposed adding an operational fire extinguisher, removing large gatherings in favor of special events, and some other minor ones. And then 16 was the big one, not a huge one, but it was an addition. Contact information in these special requirements shall conspicuously be posted or otherwise made available to tenants. This is the, this is the effect of the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation on where short-term rentals could be seated on the table of short-term rental uses. So if you see the purple, the purple would be the additions recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board, and the red would be what they came into, which was the recommendation of the village council. And again, home stay, we did not make a recommendation on home stays. So council options after public hearing, after conducting the public hearing, council has the following options. Continue the public hearing or continue deliberations to a future meeting. If you continue, if you continue the hearing, it must be, you must state a specific time, date, and place. That's for the hearing. Adopt proposed amendments as drafted or as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board. Adopt proposed amendment with revisions to any of the sections as drafted, or reject or take no action on the proposed amendments. And with that, I am done with this presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Darren. We'll now enter into the comment period. I've given you the basic guidelines to that. What I'd like to do is I'll call off two to three names at a time so that those of you who will be following on, the speaker will be prepared to come to the podium, make your comments, and we look forward to that. So the first speaker on the list here is Colette Kalinsky, followed by Alan Hall and Alan Torpa. Colette? And I think the microphone is on for you, so we'll let you know if we can't hear you. Please proceed.
Colette Kalinsky, ooh, that's too loud. Colette Kalinsky, 25, Queens Court. Last I checked, the U.S. Constitution says we the people, not we the special interest real estate industry. Under police powers granted by the 10th Amendment, states, and equally important, the people are given rights to protect the health and safety of the entire population above all else. In 1926, the Supreme Court ruled that zoning regulations were a legislative use of governmental authority. Google searches to find single-family residential zoning as a planning restriction of development to allow only single-family detached homes, disallowing townhomes, duplexes, and multifamily apartments. I am not a lawyer, but that appears to address the property right issues expressed by STR supporters at September's P&amp;Z meeting. House Bill 401 and Senate Bill 349, which would essentially eliminate single-family zoning in North. zoning in North Carolina, have yet to pass. Does that make any current apartment rentals in single-family zoning unauthorized upzoning? Like running a stop sign or speeding standard practices are not necessarily legal. Threatened lawsuits might open a larger can of worms, including mortgage occupancy clause violations, or advertising exaggerated square footage. Legislative sponsors of such bills, which appear to protect lucrative business deals, should step forward and explain to the voters why they are introducing such bills, and ensure the voting public that they will not benefit from such bills, especially if they are involved in investing, developing, auctioning, et cetera, real estate. Also, they will not sponsor bills protecting themselves from punitive action. It is guaranteed that real estate investors would be the first to cry foul if all zoning disappeared and commercial developers erected a wall or placed a dumpster abutting their properties. Or is it certain individuals are anti-laws unless they protect their business dealings? U.S. lax real estate protection has made U.S. an international target, often through hidden pocket listings. Such investors in turn support political campaigns. One final comment addressing P&amp;Z decision to not favor banning STRs. Committee members who lived in mixed-use areas seem concerned that their area would suffer from an inundation of STRs if they were restricted from residential areas. If all else fails, a new ordinance might be needed prohibiting leaf blowing at 7:01 in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Hall, followed by Alan Torpa and Greg Brent.
Thank you. Couple comments, a couple areas, and then a recommendation on how we could possibly fix this for everybody. Number one, I want to talk a little bit about the impact that the pandemic has had on this area in particular. When we had no air travel, no cruises, golf was considered, from a health standpoint, fairly safe. We had huge motorhome and travel trailer sales, very high vacation home sales, and the vacation home rental, or the home rental business, the vacation rentals, really surged because it was viewed as something that could be controlled, golf was fairly safe, and we saw the numbers after the initial pandemic increase significantly. What's happening now? Air travel's back, cruises are back, the motorhome and travel trailer sales are much lower, partially because they can't get the parts. Vacation homes are starting to decline. We've got high inflation, higher interest rates, the stock market is really pretty ugly right now. And I guess my concern is, are we looking at a problem that existed in part because of the pandemic, and is this going to be a long-term trend? And having had a vacation rental for seven years and trying to break even, this is a tough business. There is a lot of competition, and quite honestly, with what I see going on in the economy, I don't even think you may have a problem several years from now, and it's not going to be a great expansion of the short-term rentals. It's going to be people trying to sell the property and get out of an investment that turned bad. So just keep that in mind, that there was a very unusual period that we're basing some of these decisions on. Second thing is, I'll call them the chosen ones. In all of the comments I see, and unfortunately, it also comes from council, that it appears that full-time residents are the ideal situation. I hate to tell you this, but this is a vacation destination, and people buy vacation homes for part-time use, I'm not saying rental use, they buy vacation homes for part-time vacation use in a vacation destination. We are one of those. I live in Doral Woods, very nice residential area. The house to my left is owned by a couple in New Jersey. The house next to that is owned by a couple in New Jersey. The house across the street is owned by a couple in Pennsylvania. The house to my right is owned by a couple, another couple in Pennsylvania. And all I hear, I can't go next door and get a cup of sugar, I can't have a discussion with the people next door. And yet, the people that have vacation homes are kind of put in this, we're not a full-time resident, therefore, we're part of the problem. And I've talked to a number of vacation home renters that feel like there probably ought to be a sign in Pinehurst that says, if you're looking to buy a vacation home, you probably should not look in Pinehurst because you're not welcome here. That is the feeling that's been portrayed article after article.
Three minutes, three minutes.
Oh, quick one. If I look at the real numbers, the real numbers are not 400, and we should be looking at actual rentals, not listings. I had a vacation rental listed in three different websites. The real number is probably about 100, and the solution is simple, but it's been ignored, unfortunately, by the council. You first need to--
Sir, I'm sorry, we're really going to have to conclude.
All right.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alan Torpa, followed by Greg, is it Brent Burnett?
I hear a lot about the amount of money that the short-term rentals are going to bring into the community, but I don't think that's really a relevant statistic. The short-term rental actually proposes to replace one sort of income with another. They're replacing a resident with a rental. And it's not even that, because you really also have to look at the pattern of the spending. Narrow-profile spending is a relatively small, will support a relatively small number of businesses, whereas wide spending, wide-profile spending will support a wide variety of businesses. Narrow-profile spending will do little to help the community at large, whereas the wide-profile spending is much more likely to produce stable and robust community. Now, whatever money the visitors bring in, it's going to be narrow-profile. Contrary to popular opinion, people on a golf vacation don't decide to drop off at the hospital for a colonoscopy between rounds of golf, nor do they buy cars or the latest appliances, computers, clothing, et cetera. On the other hand, residents, especially the well-invested seniors that Pinehurst attracts, spend widely, and often spend large sums of money remodeling their houses, buying cars, appliances, clothing, patronizing all manner of restaurants, gymnasiums, symphony, churches, and charities, et cetera. The spending of the visitors is hugely different. The resorts get money, the renter gets money, and maybe the restaurants get money. Replacing the seniors in particular could have disastrous effects on the medical community. The seniors use the hospitals, and really are one reason why a small community like Pinehurst has such an excellent medical situation here.
Three minutes, a little bit more?
Well, in essence, I think that we're overlooking the fact that our residents are an economic asset, and that messing with them can really destabilize. And we have another solution to the problem, and that's simply to have people, if there really is a need, you get a business plan to--
Mr. Torpa, really, I--
I'm just going to finish.
I appreciate your company.
You can get a business plan and get a motel instead of a short-term rental.
Thank you very much. Greg? And what is the last name?
Good evening, I'm Greg Bryant.
Bryant.
Bryant, yes. And we live at 5 Foxhound Run, and we have a short-term rental on 85 Shaw Road Southwest. And I'm here tonight to ask if the Village Council will please focus on the facts and not rely on myths and second-hand and third-hand accounts of STR atrocities, to form a foundation for their reckless decisions. By turning a deaf ear to the facts, by embracing myths and made-up stories, by neglecting feedback from survey results because they do not support your preconceptions, by forgetting the heritage and history of Pinehurst, by rejecting the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Board, and by continuing to hurl yourselves blindly down the path you were on, you will force short-term renter owners to sue the village. We have already hired legal counsel, and we are preparing to do just that. And you should know, your entire process guarantees you will lose, and in the end, you will pay our attorney fees. That is what happened in Wilmington, and that will happen here. And when you are finished, your legacy will be that you wasted a million dollars of citizens' money on your ludicrous and toxic folly to destroy the village of Pinehurst. Please take note, I am an attorney and a CPA. We live in the village, we own an STR in the village, we love welcoming families and amateur golfers to our village, we do not hate strangers, we do not support banning STRs, and we do not support the unconstitutional taking of property. Many lawyers and accountants agree with me because they understand the law and the horrific economic wreckage your reckless folly will create. In fact, we have been contacted from lawyers from all over the country who have offered pro bono support to our cause and to stop you from the illegal taking of private property. You are making national news, and it is not flattering press. It is simple, the proposed amendments are unconstitutional for two reasons. One is, you are encumbering private residential property with a restriction that reduces property values for the entire village without any compensation in violation of the Fifth Amendment, and if you haven't read it, it's in the lobby, right outside this door. It says, "Private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation." End quote. This is the last sentence of the Fifth Amendment, and I remind Village Council, you are bound by it too. The amortization of three years is so capricious and arbitrary, it is illegal. It is imminent domain in taking a property without any compensation. This is why the Highlands dropped amortization altogether. You are singling out and taking the property of a class of residents not because of the use, appearance, cleanliness, safety, or condition of the building, but solely because of the term of the lease. And at the same time, you're giving the resort a complete pass. And where is the village's attorney on this? Are you disregarding this, counsel, because it doesn't satisfy your agenda? Please do not ignore the facts. Please do not ignore the obvious. You should be very reluctant to take away private property rights without careful consideration of the possible unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I've asked, please hold your applause on this, we'll move right along with our comments. Next speaker is Tom Paschley, followed by Linda Guerra, followed by Mary Ann Weidra.
Afternoon. I'm Tom Paschley, I live on Donald Ross Drive, 26-year resident of the village of Pinehurst, and the president of Pinehurst Resort and Country Club. Pinehurst Resort and Country Club has significant concerns over the amount of and the rapid proliferation of short-term rentals in our community, and their impact on the historical ambiance and the quality of life in the village. For Pinehurst Resort and Country Club, our overriding priority is the experience of our members, overnight guests, and employees. With interest in golf at an all-time high, we're fortunate to be in the position of working to balance record demand from both members and guests. At the same time, we're seeing a significant increase in other visitors to our properties, which we welcome, but which also has the potential to create imbalances. Those imbalances can come in the form of car parking, cart parking, crowded putting greens, long lines for restaurants. The additional visitors and the resulting imbalances can certainly be profitable, but they also have the potential to negatively impact our member and overnight guest experience. We're concerned enough about protecting the quality of that experience that we're evaluating options to restrict outside access to several of our facilities. With 400-plus short-term rental units available in the village, and an average of three bedrooms per unit, we've unknowingly added a 1,200-room hotel to our community, which, for context, is five times the size of the Carolina Hotel's 230 rooms. Pinehurst Resort recently contemplated adding a 34-room lodge, and appeared before this council four times to secure approval. That eventual approval came with a costly list of required conditions in order to proceed. There have been no conditions, required infrastructure contributions, or consistent regulatory enforcement to go along with the 1,200-room de facto hotel. We believe the playing field needs to be leveled and consistent with the regulatory framework that is fair, transparent to all stakeholders. Similar to other communities working to address this issue, we believe the village must strive to achieve a level of tourism that's sustainable, and guard against potential over-tourism. If we don't plan and act accordingly, we're in danger of losing the character that attracted people here in the first place. We thank you for addressing this complex issue through your thoughtful and thorough process. We must protect the quality of life that has made Pinehurst so special for 125-plus years, and preserve its character for present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hold your applause, please. Next, Linda Guerra, followed by Mary Ann Weidra, followed by Jason Aslanian.
Yes, my name is Linda Guerra, 15 McQueen Road, Pinehurst. A couple of months ago, a young STR advocate addressed you, and he stated, "This was not a retirement community, and seniors should go to Florida." And then he added, "There are plenty of beds in Brookdale Nursing Home." While Pinehurst is more than a retirement community, it is the retirees that have sustained Pinehurst with time and expertise that could match the revenue that is realized from any one major golf event. My internet research shows that the value of a nonprofit volunteer as of April 2022 is worth $29.95 an hour. I sent you a list of 17 nonprofits that rely heavily on retiree volunteers. I have myself worked with the Clara McLean House, serving tea to chemo patients at the hospital. I chaired Relief for Life, I work weekly at the Boys and Girls Club, and in 2009, I was honored to receive from United Way of Moore County, the Spirit of Community Award for Outstanding Service and Continuous Contribution to the People of Our Community. My husband, who had been a member of the Knights of Columbus at Sacred Heart Church, he worked tirelessly with a program that monetarily supports special education children in the Moore County schools. One of my neighbors who attends these meetings, he's very concerned about the erosion of the connection he has with our neighbors. He likes to take daily walks, greeting neighbors, and treating their pets to the treats he carries in his pockets. My neighbors are invaluable to me. Recently, on a Friday evening, a neighbor alerted me that water was streaming from the property near my water meter. The water had already stretched across the front of the STR next to me. And the Moore County Public Works came quickly to repair the leak. I wondered if those weekend renters noticed that water, and if they had, would they have contacted someone? The STR issue is much greater than reporting garbage cans and excessive noise. Our neighborhoods are at risk of dying, and if we lose that connection of neighbor helping neighbor and lose our retirees, the single-family neighborhoods are at stake. I've been accused in an email from one of your council members of telling untruths. Nothing I have said at these meetings have been untrue. But I'm going to show you something that is what I believe untrue. Many of these things in this single, this full-page ad by the pro-STR people, there are untruths, because I certainly would like to know how my property value has increased with the increased STRs and living next to one. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Ann Weidra, followed by Jason Aslanian, followed by Brandon Goodman. Ms. Weidra.
All right. Council members, mayor, thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to try and slice and dice, because, mayor, you covered some of the comments in your opening comments and rules for speaking. I'm speaking to the rapid and unregulated growth of STRs that's undermining our village vision. We know, I'm not going to go through the historical stuff, but we started out about 68 units since inception, that was about 2018. In 2021, they jumped to 368, and year-to-date, the number is now over 510. There's a staggering 650% increase in Airbnb and Verbos in two and a half years in what was once homes in our community. STR advocates, you just, Linda just covered this about the misinformation campaign implying all rentals will be banned, that's false. We have the ordinance, and folks can read that. It's a reinforcement of existing zoning laws for permitted land use. Also, it goes without saying that residents understand long-term leases and special rentals for opens and other events have been and will always be part of our tradition. 53% of existing-- 53% of existing tourist rentals will not be affected by these PDO changes. Since the village has not kept record of STR licenses, code violations, or incidents, a meticulous research and cross-verification effort was launched to mine that data from sources such as AirDNA, Verbo, Moore County Property Records, and the Convention and Visitor Board. Here's a few fast facts. 235, or 47%, of the STRs are in single-family neighborhoods and were purchased in the last year and a half. 77% of all STRs are owned by out-of-state, out-of-country investors, as passive income generators with no stake in our community. Tourism is up, but the hotel occupancy, and this is from the Convention and Visitor Board, the occupancy is down. It's dropped in a year period to a negative 12.4%. I'll wrap this up quickly here. There's a moral component. Ayardi Matrix report reveals that by 2030, institutions will own 40% of all single-family rentals of 7.6 million homes. So much for the American dream. One other tidbit here. Service workers can't afford the average Pinehurst rent of $2,000 a month. Recently, Sedona, Arizona, offered $10,000, and Breckenridge, Colorado, offered $20,000 to STR renters to lease to local workers. There's no housing for the workers. I'm going to close here. STR complaints. The STR folks have mocked citizens who report violations as Karens. Since April, over 88 verified complaints were made to the police or posted on my VOP. Seemingly innocuous issues such as taking care of trash containers seem exaggerated. By the second and third time you've cleaned up someone else's garbage and returned the reeking trash containers, you're done. Moreover, a significant number of well-documented complaints are more serious. Rowdy, obnoxious behavior by tenants, drunkenness, trespassing, property damage. For those who say existing Pinehurst laws are adequate to handle any problems, then where are the records through the 9/11 calls? And the list is cited.
Three minutes, please, three minutes.
Okay. Why should Pinehurst residents have any faith in promises of future enforcement when there hasn't been no enforcement in the past? Denial is not a solution to this growing problem. The village of Pinehurst must uphold our zoning laws and not bow to the pressures of profiteers. When you betray your oath of office, you betray the residents you swore to serve.
We'll have to stop there. Thank you. Thank you. Jason Aslanian, Jason, followed by Brandon Goodman.
Thank you. Jason Aslanian, 2060 Longleaf Drive West. I did attend the zoning and board meeting. There were a lot more people, so I want to thank you for bearing this set of things while most of us were sitting here waiting till the end of the meeting. So appreciate you concerned with our time on that. Number two, I'm going to cut to the chase. I've heard economics, I've heard this, I'm going to talk politics. I know which each one of you are on this council, okay? And I'm tired of seeing bad decision-making from a certain party in our country. I thought it wouldn't get here to Pinehurst, North Carolina, but it has. So I want to go over a few things that I don't understand. I don't understand how Democrat politicians, how they think. You're probably for an open border, but when it comes to your neighborhood, you're not as inclusive. Complete hypocrisy. Martha's Vineyard is a good example of that recently. You're killing a 100-year effort in growing this resort community. And I know we got comments from the resort, but if you go ahead and do this, you're providing a monopoly on top of already making a bunch of economic failures. How would you enforce this? With just writing things down on paper? I don't believe your chief of police is in favor of this. So how are you going to enforce it? Last time I was in here, we had 150 signs that weren't supposed to be in here, and you didn't enforce that. So how are you going to enforce who's in everyone's home? I just would like a simple answer on how you're going to do that. I know you write it down. That's what politicians do. How can you explain if this were to pass, how it helps all residents? All? You can't. Right now, we've got hurricanes on the way, the economy's failing, inflation sucks, and everything, and we're focused on killing progress here in such a wonderful community. How will you handle, this has been brought up, the lawsuits that will definitely follow? Again, I think that's a great point. How are you paying for it? I sure don't want to pay for it living here because I'm against it. And finally, how will you sleep at night if you pass this? I have an idea. Compromise. It's what real leadership does. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brandon Goodman, followed by Nick Sink.
I'm going to read into the public record the comments from Ari Bargil, who is the senior counsel for the Institute of Justice. He is unable to be here tonight. He's a resident of South Florida. He had planned on being here tonight, and the hurricane kept him from attending. "Good evening, Mayor, members of Pinehurst Council. I had hoped to be able to join this evening's meeting in person, but I am Florida-based, and unfortunately Hurricane Ian disrupted those plans. However, I hope that each of you had had the opportunity to review my comments, which I submitted to the village council last Friday. Today, I'll briefly discuss the recent version of your proposed ordinance that is under consideration tonight. I am an attorney with the Institute for Justice, a national nonprofit law firm that represents clients pro bono in defense of fundamental American liberties like property rights. And as all of you likely know, I am the attorney who represented Peg and David Schroder in their successful challenge to Wilmington's unlawful attempt to impose a cap and separation restriction on its short-term rentals and relatedly, its attempt to amortize non-conforming STRs that had been operating legally at the time the ordinance was enacted. The proposal before you appears to have been drafted with Schroder opinion in mind. In fact, it seems as though it was crafted in such a way as to thwart a plain reading of that opinion and the statutory law it interprets. This is not a new tactic in this state. The General Assembly routinely passes laws designed to protect property rights, and then local governments, whether in Charlotte, Wilmington, or now Pinehurst, look for clever ways around them. The most recent version of this cat-and-mouse game played out in the North Carolina Court of Appeals. That court held unequivocally that state law prohibited Wilmington's registration scheme. In response, Pinehurst is evidently misreading Schroder decision as prohibiting only registration, but allowing something even more onerous, permitting. But the Court of Appeals cast severe doubt on the propriety of such a hyper-technical approach when it explained that, quote, "Wilmington asserts that our interpretation would allow it to replace register with permit. But such a hypothetical ordinance is not before us today and would be open to legal challenges asserting that the statute's language should be applied to reach any permit," that is. "In all practical effect, a registration barred by the statute," unquote. Such an ordinance, the Court of Appeals handed, would lead to absurd results or contravene the manifest purpose of the legislature. This is in footnote nine of the Schroder opinion. And yet, that is precisely what Pinehurst is considering. So I strongly urge caution, as I mentioned in my earlier letter, the legal defensibility of amortization in a context like this one is far from settled, and your desire to impose a permitting requirement for legal short-term rentals is very likely preempted by state law. In fact, to the extent this Schroder decision provides any insight on this approach, it strongly suggests it is wrong.
Mr. Goodman.
A similar mistake cost Wilmington over $300,000 in attorney's fees. In sum, the appropriate and legal remedy is to allow existing uses to remain and use your zoning power to regulate future use. That is, after all, the entire point of zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you please? Nick Sink, followed by Teresa Johns, and William Hughes. Nick? Mr. Sink here. We'll move on then to Teresa Johns. Thank you, Teresa.
I'm Teresa Johns, 25, Aronamink Lane. I'm here to speak in favor of the planning and zoning board's recommendation to allow short-term rentals in all neighborhoods and review the guidelines they put forth in their submission to council. Some who are opposed to STRs paint a picture of a constant revolving door of endless guests. For many properties, this simply is not factual. In a recent opinion piece by Tom Reedy in The Pilot, he complains of a short-term rental next to him that, and I quote, "In June, July, and August, there were roughly three rentals each month and a three-night stay on average," unquote. I'm just a nurse, but I'm pretty sure that math then indicates that over two-thirds of the time, that property sat vacant and quiet. Philip Sunia, who has spoken before you many times, has researched home listing data on AirDNA. That's not Airbnb, it's AirDNA. The same third-party source our local Convention and Visitors Board pays to obtain monthly STR data. Here's what the AirDNA data shows. Full-time residents list their homes for rent during major events or when they are traveling. 48% of these are booked for less than 90 days per year. Other short-term rentals are owned by wintering residents. 46% of those homes are offered for less than 180 days per year. That's offered, not rented. Of those who own homes for occasional personal use, 34% are available for greater than 270 days per year. However, only 11 of these, not 11%, only 11 properties, are booked for over 270 days per year. Of the properties that are full-time short-term rentals, only 2% are booked for more than 270 days per year, and of the 19% of all properties booked for over 180 days per year, the majority of those are townhouses and condos. I just wish that you all would be honest about what your reason is for wanting to ban short-term rentals. Talk about crime and noise, and we seem to give you data that shows that that's really not the problem you think it is, or trash cans, and we've shown data that a lot of the trash cans left out are actually full-time residents. And now you're talking about to have affordable housing, and I'm all for affordable housing. But you don't achieve that by making someone else sell their property at a loss. There's things that you can do. You've got these small-area plans. You could make deals with developers that they have to have certain types of housing to have affordable housing. But you're not solving your housing problem. And I don't think, I think that's what you're saying now because that's a politically correct term. I don't think that's why you're trying to ban short-term rentals. I wish you'd be honest.
Thank you. William Hughes, followed by Donna Outen. William Hughes, followed by Donna Outen. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you. Joni Mitchell got it right, though I doubt she was contemplating short-term rentals when she wrote "Big Yellow Taxi." Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you got till it's gone? I live in a neighborhood and have neighbors. Unfortunately, there are also five houses operating as short-term rentals. My neighbors are an important part of my life. I enjoy their company on social occasions and reciprocate small favors like gathering mail and papers or bringing in trash cans for some of them. During my walks around the neighborhood, I've gotten to know many of my neighbor dogs. Linda Guerra made reference to the biscuits I carry around in my pocket in the neighborhood. Our neighborhood association improved the intersection at Beulah Hill Road and McDonald Road East with plantings, ground lights, a sprinkler system, and we do periodic cleanup and fix-up efforts to keep it attractive. That's what our neighborhood does, what I and my neighbors do. A neighbor couple supports Toys for Tots and hosts an annual gathering at their home in appreciation of our neighborhood's support for that organization. I'm a volunteer at the Moore County Senior Enrichment Center and also a member of the Moore County Aging Advisory Council. These are the kind of interactions that are woven into the fabric of my neighborhood. I'm sure many of you who reside in Pinehurst have similar contact with neighbors. Each time a home is turned into an STR, it removes a few threads from that fabric. I think allowing STRs to develop unchecked in the village will continue to erode my quality of life. I don't want to live in a neighborhood without neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Next speaker is Donna Outen, and it's Nick Sink in the hall. Donna, you're coming to the podium. Thank you, followed by Rose Heinz, please.
I've thought about a lot of things and I've written a lot of things, so I hope this makes sense, but one thing I wanted to say is that...
Could you bring the microphone a little closer, please? Thank you. Or just turn it up?
I've thought about a lot of things and written a lot of things, and I don't know I'll say them all, but one thing I wanted to say is that we are all people here, and we all might have an opinion about this, that, and the other, but at the end of the day, we all have to come together and come to an agreement on this rather than separating us. And I think there's a way that we can come together. We might not all be extremely happy and extremely sad, but at least we'll all be closer to, you know, coming to a solution. But the one thing I wanted to say was that in some ways Airbnb and VRBO are self-correcting. If you own, if you have an STR, you have to register it with, you know, a platform to get advertisement, and so it's also where you get part of your insurance coverage. You are rated every single time a guest leaves your place. So you're not going to provide something that is less than stellar. You're going to make sure it's clean. You're going to make sure it has the things that they need. You're going to make sure they're cared for, and I personally interact on Messenger with my people that stay. On the flip side of that, when a guest leaves, I rate them. So my business is completely dependent on my ratings, and so I wouldn't be able to make it if I had a really crappy STR or if I allowed people that did crappy things. So it's kind of self-correcting. And so I don't know if any of you have ever stayed in one, but if I've stayed in one, I want to make sure I clean it up when I leave. I want to make sure that it, you know, at least go above and beyond so that, you know, I get a good rating. And also, I like to be kind to people when I leave. But the same holds true, people that have stayed in mine, they all want to get a good rating and they want to do the right thing. And so I've not ever had any complaint or any trouble with that, and so I think, I don't know how many in here realize that's how it works, but it really is self-correcting. And so I think there's something to be considered there. There's just, it's not rampant, you know, mayhem and chaos all the time. So that's all I'll say. I had a lot more, but...
Thank you. Rose Heinz, followed by Kathy Elsaya. Rose?
Rose Heinz, 225 Led Forest Drive Southwest. Thank you for the opportunity. It's now September, and we've been dissecting and debating this problem for almost a full year, and everyone's getting weary of the issue, even those who have not been personally affected. For them, it's a problem they would rather steer clear of. They understand it, they're sympathetic, but they would rather stay out of the fray. Understandable. But for those of us who live next door or across the street or down the block, it's something we're dealing with every day. And make no mistake about it, if we don't stop this housing trend now and start containing the short-term rental markets, it will be on everyone's doorstep in the blink of an eye. Every time another house goes on the market and is snapped up by an outside investor who is willing to outbid the average homeowner who wants to live here, whether full-time or part-time, and be a contributing member of a community, the fabric of the neighborhoods will be eroded away. It's happening all over our state. It's happening all over our country. And we've heard the arguments against the regulations. We've been told that we are exaggerating the problems. Come over to my house and see how I'm exaggerating the problem. And that we need to accept this as a natural progression of growth. After all, it's said, "We moved here because we discovered what a great place it was, and we can't close the doors to others who want to do the same." That's exactly right, and I don't want to close the doors. Just the opposite. We want to attract people who will live here and contribute to our community, like the people who were here before us, and that we are doing now. When the area starts to lose the appeal of our wonderful, quaint, neighborly, and inviting place, those families will no longer make Pinehurst their permanent destination. Be honest. Would you choose voluntarily to live in a neighborhood with a preponderance of short-term Even more pointedly, would you choose to purchase a home if you knew that it was next to... door to a short-term rental? Let's stop pussyfooting around. The only people who are supporting the uncontrolled growth of rental properties are the people who are making a large profit at our expense. If they really cared about the quality of life in Pinehurst, they would have demanded that their colleagues take care of their properties and control how tenants use the properties. A long time ago, they would have made sure that the properties were safe for their own renters, and the renters would be considerate of the neighbors, and they would not have continued to add additional beds in every nook and cranny in order to squeeze more visitors into each house to increase the rental prices per night. But they discovered the goose that laid the golden egg, and they're protecting her, not anyone else. Wrap it up in whatever fancy package you create. When you open the box, the contents are still greed. Finally, I am not unsympathetic to those, like the woman who just spoke, who are local residents and who have owned rentals for many years and have run them carefully and safely, keeping them indiscreet and dealing with the problems as they arose. But times obviously have changed. The housing market changed, the moral fabric of people unfortunately has changed, and they have become victims too, just like us, sort of collateral damage. And as so often happens, a few bad apples have spoiled the basket for everyone.
Three minutes, please.
One second. We need to prohibit short-term rentals in single-family residence districts. If the home becomes many, if, if the homes become mini-hotels with constant revolving doors every weekend for visitors, no matter how nice those visitors are, we lose what makes the residential neighborhood so vital to our community, knowing each other, watching out for each other, and caring about our community. Remember, he was right, you never realize the full value of what you have until it's lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Elsaya, followed by Polk Dillon, followed by Kim Wagner.
Mayor Strickland, Mayor Strickland and council members, thank you for this opportunity to express my thoughts and concerns. My name is Kathy Elsie. My husband David and I reside at 265 Quell Run in Clarenham Gardens subdivision. We moved here in 2019 and are thankful every day we wake up in the beautiful village of Pinehurst. Since the pandemic, we've experienced the invasion of commercial properties in single residential communities, and it's disturbing. COVID brought the influx of these to our beautiful village when the hotels were closed and the opportunity arose for people to get rich quick. These owners of commercial properties have created concerns throughout Pinehurst. I'm not here to revisit the endless accounts of the disruption, havoc, and fear they imposed on neighborhoods. What I want to point out is the fact the village of Pinehurst is investing in the community around us. We have the Cannon Park Recreational Facility, the recent acquisition of the Givens Memorial Library and Tufts Archives, the Village Greenways, Arboretum, and future development of the Southwest Recreational Complex. As residents, we see a commitment to the community of Pinehurst. Why not also commit to the voting residents of Pinehurst? Remove STRs from single-family residential neighborhoods. When we were looking for our retirement home, we intentionally stayed away from multifamily areas of Pinehurst for the reasons we did not want to live near STRs. We wanted a neighborhood where we knew our neighbors, families could afford to purchase homes, and we felt safe. Sadly, this is no longer true. In closing, it is my hope and prayer the village of Pinehurst will not give in to the threats, greed, and invasion of commercial property owners, but will make it right by voting for the residents of Pinehurst and remove STRs from single-family residential neighborhoods. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Please hold your applause, folks. Polk Dillon, followed by, I think it's, is it Kim Wagner? Go ahead, please, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you. Polk Dillon, and we lived at 175 Cherokee Road for over 30 years. And, you know, I really kind of did want to close the door when I got here. I really didn't want anybody else to come, but that's not what I'm here to say. And not all STRs are bad. We actually have a new neighbor that stayed in an STR behind us. Of course, I never knew it was rented, so he did a pretty good job. But I've heard a number of things about what the problems are, and I'd just like to give my thoughts on that. You know, I've heard that Pinehurst was founded on the notion of STRs, and I really kind of question that a lot. You know, the house that we live in is one of the originals, and I kind of doubt that the Lennox family was renting it out. And I don't think any of them were. They came down for the season, and because of that, they established a church, the village chapel, which got mentioned, and also a schoolhouse, which is, you know, two, two doors down from us. So that's not short-term rental, folks, I don't think. There wasn't a need for, there wouldn't have been a need for a church for a short-term rental. Most golfers don't do that. Then, the economy, you know, I heard reference to the fact that back in 208, 2008, I should say, that we had a depression here because, well, actually, we kind of had a depression here that year because the people didn't come visit. They should, you know, it was the locals that kept the economy going, thank goodness. The other, you know, the economy that they bring, as been pointed out a couple of times, is really enjoyed by the real estate industry and the restaurants. The entire economy of this town or this community does not depend on the short-term rentals at all. And of even, you know, the resort, we heard of all the problems that they foresee from this. And there's another one that hadn't been thought of, and that's for those of us that are members, the membership tee times have diminished greatly because of this. So, you know, the, we are a retirement community, whether we like it or not, and I think that's a wonderful thing, as was pointed out earlier. And I can assure you that retirees, I certainly wouldn't have ever wanted to move here if it was just a resort with rental properties. I moved here because it was a wonderful community. I got to go to the tree lighting and parades and things of that nature. It wouldn't exist for weekend rentals. So it's wonderful to have a great community and a resort. We don't want Myrtle Beach. We don't want just a resort.
Three minutes. Oh, thank you very much. I believe it's, is it Kim or Karen Wagner, followed by Isabel and Carol Coats? Kim, on Orange Road? Excuse me? You don't wish to speak, is that correct? Thank you. Okay. Isabel Worthy, please.
Good afternoon, members of council and mayor. My name is Isabel Worthy Maddox, P.O. Box 946 Raleigh, 27602. I'm here today representing the Country Club of North Carolina, and with me today are Don Hunter, the general manager, and Greg Johnson, a board member of the Country Club. We have a little bit different question, problem about this proposed ordinance, and I hope you'll listen to what I have to say. For nearly 60 years, CCNC has had a successful and very well-regulated rental program within the CCNC community, which generates approximately $1 million through rental and greens fees for the, for the club. They consider themselves an important, important part of the larger Pinehurst community and want to support changes that will strengthen the community. But we, we do need a compromise here so that it will allow CCNC to continue their very successful rental program. You're proposing this modified text to address impacts that people have experienced, that we heard a lot about today, but we don't really experience those kind of impacts at CCNC because there's a lot of self-regulation, it's a very self-contained community with significant self-regulation. We think there's several different ways to go about modifying the proposed text amendment to address this. One is to just modify the ordinance to add some objective standards that might allow an STR in a residential area with sufficient setbacks, lot sizes, private streets, security service. Another one would be to create a new resort zoning district. The problem with that one is it would require more additional work, including future rezoning of properties that wanted to take advantage of that additional rezoning district. The third option, and I think my, our preference, is to add a new definition for a new use, and you could call it any number of things. I would call it resort community accommodation, which would be a dwelling unit located within a defined resort community, offered for occupancy for less than 30 days with a rental program managed by an HOA or another entity. Would apply to communities that are self-contained and self-regulated and are appropriately spaced from the heart of the village and other residential properties, so the likelihood of negative impacts on others is essentially eliminated. And this really is a different animal we're talking about here in their rental program. So some of the standards could include a minimum number of contiguous lots or acreage, private streets, recorded restrictive covenants, rules and regulations which address noise, occupancy gatherings, grounds for expulsion, private security, preventing advertising, identifying individual managers with 24-hour contact info, and also the other STR requirements could apply. We think this would, could be done in the context of this text amendment. We would need to add some new definitions and revise the use table, but I think it could be done, and we'd love to work with the planning staff on developing that language. And it classifies rentals in a self-contained, self-regulated community differently than STRs that are sprinkled throughout neighborhoods, you know, in a more general nature. So we would appreciate the opportunity to work with staff to draft some amendments that address this issue because it really is a different type of use we're talking about here. And CCNC would maintain strict controls over anyone who rents a residential unit within their community, which is limited to members. So anyway, thank you for your attention and...
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Carol Coats, followed by David, I know who that is, and Courtney Jones after that. Carol Coats, please.
Carol Coats, 21 Edinburgh Lane, Pinehurst. I'd like to speak to you about a potential grace period if STRs are banned from single-family residential neighborhoods. There was a memorandum from staff to the village council recommending a minimum three-year grace period so that ST owner, STR owners can, quote, "recoup their initial investment." First off, I think there are some errors in the calculations used in that recommendation, but secondly, I would like to know why we think any grace period is even necessary. If anyone who before investing in a property in Pinehurst took the time to research village policy, i.e. the laws regarding STRs, they may not have found the term STR, but they would have clearly seen that our PDO does not allow any type of commercial lodging in single-family neighborhoods. Just because an ordinance has not been enforced does not legitimize a prohibited business. So what is the rationale for providing a three-year grace period? As you already well know, real estate values in Pinehurst have increased substantially over the past two years. Given this increase in value, any property sale would no doubt turn a tidy profit. And let's remember, we're only talking about 47% of the existing STRs in Pinehurst. That's the number located in single-family zones. Let's think about being fair to those citizens who have lived with an STR across the street or next door. Asking them to just sit tight for even two more years is already asking too much. These people bought their homes anticipating they would be among neighbors, not a new group of visitors every weekend. The bottom line is, residents do not want the instability an STR represents. It's been said the village is divided. No, the village is not divided. The divide is between the citizens of Pinehurst and the STR owners, and 77% of these owners are not even Pinehurst residents. How many residents have come before the village council supporting STRs? I've never heard anyone say they wish they had an STR next door. The people who want STRs are the non-resident owners or real estate brokers who are clearly financially motivated. Who is it that you have an obligation to support and protect? For people in our neighborhoods, it's a quality of life issue. STRs have never been a permitted use, so to give them additional time to operate is just not reasonable. My hope is you'll show your support for the residents of Pinehurst and reject the inclusion of any grace period. You owe this to the citizens of Pinehurst. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cor, 45 Shaw Road. David, aren't you here? Is Nick Sink here? Moving along, Courtney Jones, please, and that'll be followed by Matt Kenny.
Hi there. So I have two things. One is, is talking a little bit in reference to somebody...
Courtney, could you just raise that microphone a little bit, and I think it'd be better?
Yeah, I'm taller than some of the others, I guess.
Thank you very much. Yes.
It was remarked earlier that there are 88 complaints that have been logged with the village since April against vacation rentals, and I think it's important that it's noted that during that same period, there were 923 total complaints, according to village records. So you can infer from that data that then 835 are against long-term residents. So I don't know what the village would want to propose about that and the concerns with those complaints. But for me, I kind of wanted to speak more so on being a part-time resident of Pinehurst. I would live here part-time even if I don't have a short-term rental, so no, I won't be able to offer a cup of sugar half of the year and probably come to some holiday parties. But my biggest concern is how we're using village funds. And so there's current reports of Pinehurst having four lawyers to represent in the lawsuit regarding open meetings. So how much is that costing taxpayers? We just saw Wilmington dole out nearly $1 million in conclusion of their short-term rental litigation. $1 million. So the planning and zoning voted in favor of allowing vacation rentals in all residential districts. I ask that you take their recommendation into consideration as to how you vote, as this is going to cost the village and taxpayers quite a bit when it comes to village funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Matt Kenny, followed by Jeff Heintz, followed by Bob Coats.
Excuse me. You can hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you, man.
Thank you very much for you guys letting me speak tonight. I bought a short-term rental here several years ago. I am now going to be moving there and still operating a short-term rental, so I will be voting here and living here part-time. My job doesn't allow me to live here full-time, so I will be a Pinehurst resident, and I'm supporting short-term rentals. I have a short-term rental, I support its continuation. I've kind of followed this whole thing from the beginning, and, and, you know, I hear a lot of statements about all the negative things that short-term rentals bring with regards to complaints, but I think that everything that I've heard and read, as Courtney previously stated, the facts don't really substantiate to the fact that, that the majority of complaints are coming from short-term rentals. You know, the, really, I feel like this is a debate between a town that's trying to figure out whether they're a retirement community or a resort community, and that's really where the battle lies. You know, most of the statements I hear that are negative about short-term rentals, while they may be true, they're not the preponderance of the negative things that happen within this community. I think it's a bad reason to ban short-term rentals. I think the reality is, what I do know is a fact, is that short-term rentals support the businesses, the golf courses, and the restaurants of this community to a very large You know, the job that you guys have, I think, is to pick not what's good for, you know, the things that you hear from friends or whatever. Your job is to do what's right for this community. And if you look at the financial impact that banning short-term rentals is going to have in this community, I think it's going to be tremendous. I mean, I think there's been a lot of evidence that has been brought to you that has said short-term rentals are supporting... short-term rentals are supporting businesses, short-term rentals are supporting golf courses that aren't the resort, they're supporting, you know, restaurants. This is the support of the community. And then I'm going to finish with a statement that was sent to me by someone who couldn't become here because they were sick, and that is Elaine, I don't have my glasses, it looks like Bologna, and she can't make it tonight, she's sick. She said, "If you would want to speak and read this, I thought I would like to share my opinions. You still have not produced verifiable facts to back up your action to ban short-term rentals. Shame on you as custodians of the village of Pinehurst for not protecting its history, its welcoming reputation, and wonderful neighborhoods that have been welcoming visitors and tourists for decades. Please take the necessary time to be responsible and careful in how you protect what our global visitors have come to know as a lodging option being available. There are other solutions to address the concerns of us residents. The third listed value on your website is teamwork. Your team members, the planning and zoning board, has made recommendations that take all residents into account. Practice teamwork. Please do what's right." And I think even what the representative from CCNC said, you know, you guys need to take a much deeper look at this before you make a decision.
Mr. Heintz, thank you very much. Jeff Heintz, followed by Bob Coats, followed by Barbara Longjoe.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We've learned an awful lot about short-term rentals in the past year. We know that the number of STRs in our single-family neighborhoods has exploded. We know that more than 100 of them have come into operation just this year. How do those numbers not resonate? We know that the number will double in less than two years, and that soon the trend will be irreversible, and that allowing that to happen would be madness. We know that Pinehurst residents, rather, find STRs objectionable. It's true that residents generally regard the quality of their life in Pinehurst, more than 90% of them, as good or excellent, and that's terrific. But we also know that no matter how you slice, dice, or contort the data, at the end of the day, the simple fact is that residents' perception of their quality of life goes down meaningfully in direct proportion to the number of STRs around them. We know that residents' complaints are common. We know that now, after a couple of fall starts. And what's the STRs industry's response to this? Well, the fellow who's been quoted a couple times tonight, I think, put it sincerely. "All you Karens should go live over at Brookdale Senior Living. There are plenty of beds there." Well, I like my bed right where it is, and I made it there without an inkling that the house next to me would deteriorate into the Bates Motel, or that one day a guest would let himself into my house, mistakenly or not. Dismissing the adverse impact of STRs on single-family neighborhoods by saying you knew Pinehurst was a resort community when you moved here is cynical and disingenuous. We know the STR industry is unrelenting in its opposition to any regulation, and there have been threats of litigation and dire predictions of massive attorney fee awards. You wouldn't be human if you didn't think about that. But government shouldn't cower in the face of prospective litigation, especially here where the Schroder decision tells us that communities like ours can enact zoning regulations that prohibit STRs in single-family neighborhoods exactly as our proposed ordinance would do. Recently, individual non-gated allotments have begun amending their governing documents to prohibit STRs. Pinewild, of course, already does. But in view of the evidence we've seen over these months, a prohibition on STRs shouldn't be a patchwork. It should be consistent across single-family residential districts, just as for other residential uses. And this is the village's job, anyway. It's not the neighborhood's. As council members, you owe a fiduciary duty, the utmost responsibility of good faith, trust, and care to our village and to its residents. You owe no such duty to any industry, least of all one that has wormed its way into the fabric of our village and now desperately seeks to preserve a unique business.
Time, please.
This is the big finish. "Desperately seeks to preserve a unique business model that is based on profit without accountability and a complete absence of sensible regulation." And the charm and character of the STRs, rather, of our single-family residential districts is the stock and trade of the STRs. But they play no role in creating or preserving that charm and character. In fact, they undermine it. The proposed ordinance is sensible and defensible, both legally and morally, and it should be enacted.
Thank you, Mr. Heintz. Thank you. Next speaker, Bob Coats, followed by Barbara Longjoe, followed by John Webster. Bob Coats.
Bob Coats, 21 Edinburgh Lane, Pinehurst. Short-term rentals are not just a Pinehurst problem. This blight that is destroying the very fabric of the traditional American neighborhood is a nationwide phenomenon, and it is being addressed by hundreds of communities throughout the country. I want to briefly describe how some of our neighboring towns are dealing with this problem. Southern Pines does not permit STRs in residential neighborhoods. This is clearly stated in their Unified Development Ordinance, which is the equivalent of the Pinehurst PDO. Southern Pines staff has confirmed this. Whispering Pines, to their credit, got out in front of this early. Since January of 2021, their land development ordinance has prohibited whole-house STRs within the village's planning jurisdiction. And there are several local gated communities whose HOA covenants prohibit STRs. I am disappointed that our own P&amp;Z did not make recommendations along the same lines as our neighboring towns. I have looked at the charter of the Pinehurst P&amp;Z. One of the responsibilities is stated as the adoption of plans and policies for the purpose of achieving the coordinated and harmonious development of the village. If anyone thinks that rezoning the entire village to allow the commercial enterprise of STRs everywhere would promote harmonious development, they are sadly mistaken. It is the obligation of the village council to put the needs and desires of their own residents first, not to give priority to what are mostly non-Pinehurst STR investors. If the charm of our traditional single-family neighborhoods is forsaken, then we have truly all lost. And one more thing. The pro-STR crowd concentrates on the economic Armageddon, which will befall Pinehurst should there be any restrictions on where STRs can exist. Short-term rentals have only really mushroomed in the last three to four years. If they were really critical to our economic survival, how the heck did Pinehurst thrive for 125 years without them? Finally, with reference to the mayor's opening comments, while STRs are not expressly prohibited by name in the existing PDO, there is language that prohibits commercial lodging use not expressly permitted. I strongly urge the village council to continue the prohibition of STRs in single-family residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. Barbara Longjoe, followed by John Webster.
Barbara Longjoe, live at 26 Glasgow. I hear a lot about all of the horrible things that have happened with the short-term renters, and it's horrible. We have laws. Why are those laws not being enforced? Why are those people not being thrown out? Why are those STR owners not being cited for these things? This thing that, oh, I have to see it in order to do it? No, you have records of these offenses, and it should be taken care of, and those people should lose their rights to have these STRs. I mean, why make everybody else suffer because of what some of them do? I mean, if you have five kids and two of them break the rules, do you ground all five, or do you ground the two? I have this thing of, I just feel like there's a lot of control issues going on here. We've been controlled so much over the last couple of years, and now we've got more control going on. And I just think that the P&amp;Z recommendation is good. What's the rush? We could survey all the neighborhoods to find out what everyone really thinks. Obviously, not everyone's going to come to these meetings. I shouldn't even be here tonight. I have actually out-of-town visitors, they own a vacation place here, and they're at their vacation place, and they sometimes rent it out. And when I called her today and I said, "Are you aware of this?", and she said, "What is Pinehurst doing? Are they trying to control everybody's lives?". And I said, "Apparently, it appears that way." I just feel as if you need to be a neighbor to these people as well. Yes, we who live here as permanent residents vote for you. But the people who have the STRs, even if they don't live here, they pay taxes as well. And there are regulations they need to follow, safety regulations and so forth, and if they're not doing it, they need to have their ability to have these STRs revoked. I just, it's all kind of a control thing to me of telling people what they can and can't do with their property use rights. Another thing I'd like to address is something that's a little more personal, and that, of course, there's been a conversation going on on social media about this. And there are an awful lot of personal attacks back and forth. Yes, we disagree on these things, but we don't have to be nasty to each other about the whole thing. Me being told that someone said, "Well, I don't think you like living in the South. You're not a Southerner." I said, "Well, yeah, I am. I was born and raised in the South, so bless your heart." But I just feel that we don't need to fight each other on this and be so nasty to each other, or we will never come to a compromise. It's been said so many times that whatever we come up with as a solution is not going to please everyone. But we have to be able to live together, and we have to stop attacking our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. John Webster, followed by Tom Cogan, Linden Road. Mr. Webster.
John Webster, 140 West McKenzie. I want to refer to some of the economic aspects of this debate. A quick review of the list that we produced and is the go-to resource describing Pinehurst STRs. 77% of Pinehurst STRs are owned by non-Pinehurst residents. They're not neighbors, full stop. 51% of single-family Pinehurst STRs have been purchased since the beginning of 2020. In single-family areas, and taking into account that some investors have multiple STR properties, I calculated that a ban on single-family STRs would affect only some 55 or so Pinehurst resident investors. My second point is, we're witnessing a hyped-up doomsday campaign by STR advocates. Kevin Drum, under the heading of Economic Armageddon, states that, "Should the VOP amend the PDO as proposed, Pinehurst will face, amongst other calamities, real estate values will lose 20%. If this is true, I think, as somebody else said earlier on, the Fed is going to be sued because they've taken part of their property away. A loss of nearly 300,000 visitors, equal to 30% of visitors to the whole county, just because half of the STRs in Pinehurst might be closed in three years' time, really. $100 million loss in sales tax revenue, whereas the VOP receives $4 to $5 million a year, so $100 million, it's going to be difficult. $42 million loss in food and beverage income. That's equal to 1/3 of the total food and accommodation revenue in Pinehurst. In reality, vacationers will continue coming here, and they'll find food and beverages, and hotels will continue to function, and the STR business will become concentrated in the condom district." So I think this whole impact that this article, Economic Armageddon, is, you know, it just doesn't stand up. My third point is that businesses in Pinehurst, other than accommodation, principally cater to 18,000 residents plus visitors from surrounding areas, making them a much larger block of consumers than the vacationers at Pinehurst STRs. 235 single-family STRs is the equivalent of some 880 additional residents. We're 18,000. These vacationers probably consume more golf time and restaurant meals than average residents. On the other hand, they don't buy legal accounting and medical services, nor do they acquire cars when they're here. So the vacationer's consumption emphasis is just skewed in a different direction to that of residents. If those 235 STRs are returned to resident living, we would gain, I calculate, another 760 residents, who habitually consume local goods and services, and also support churches, volunteer organizations, and buy PCC memberships. So which of these two groups of roughly 800 consumers is more important to the local economy? Marcus LaRose once claimed that the VOP would need to increase its property tax rate by eight cents if STRs were banned. In fact, municipal finances are actually hindered by STRs. And nobody actually claims that Southern Pines and Whispering Pines economies are collapsing or in the midst of an economic armageddon just because they restrict STRs in residential areas. Pinehurst existed and was functioning perfectly well before STR investment frenzy began in 2020. Please don't be swayed by the doom-stirred economic arguments. They don't stand up to scrutiny. Thank you very much.
Tom, I'm sorry, Linden Road. What is the last name, please?
Congor-
Can you spell it? Spell it for me.
C-O-N-G-O-R-A-N.
Parker. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. My mom grew up in Pinehurst, North Carolina, on Linden Road. She's 70, and she's held on to her home for about 60 years. She loves her time, that she gets to travel, and actually, the reason that she's not living here full-time is because she has four grandchildren in New Hampshire. She's retired, she lives on a fixed income, and due to inflation and high costs of living the last couple of years, it's been a struggle for her. About a month ago, we got a letter from Pinehurst Village asking that we clear up some trees by the road. We worked closely with some employees of Pinehurst to try and figure out what the complaint and the issue with the trees were to begin with. I think they went out with the city or village of Pinehurst maybe twice to try and figure out what trees they needed to take down. They ended up having to take down several trees and then figuring out that the complaint was coming from another resident, and they had to take down a couple more trees. So all in all, in an effort to try and be a good neighbor, my mom ended up spending about $5,000 to take down some trees that I don't even think were on her property.
Sir, I'm not following this. Are you trying to address the short-term rental issue or other issues?
Short-term rental.
Carry on.
It's coming. So my mom basically uses short-term rental to cover a cost of owning her home in Pinehurst right now. She's done it for three years, I think, and has never really had a problem. It's not a cash cow. It's just a way to support and pay for all the services that it costs to own her home in Pinehurst while she lives in New Hampshire. So again, I think there's a couple of points that have been made tonight, but I think one that comes through is that the village of Pinehurst has always depended on a lot of tourism as part of the economy. And I know you guys mentioned earlier today that figuring out a way for future jobs and job growth is important. And by eliminating short-term rentals, you are, in fact, eliminating several small businesses that my mom helps employ. So one more point I'd just like to make is that the taxes that she pays each year actually get to be spent in a more judicious manner because she's not here full-time. It can go and be spent more on children's schools. So that's it. I guess my only other thought is, I think a reasonable compromise is to put some type of cap on the existing STRs and grandfather in the existing STRs that have been running properly without complaints for years, or maybe it's less than that, maybe it's six months. But I think that's the only way to create a fair compromise. But I think that's the only way to create a fair compromise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kevin Drum, followed by Jennifer Stoddard, followed by Phil Sonia.
I'm a 52-year resident. I believe in Tufts' vision. In 1996, he made 53% of his homes rentals. Now only 4% are. Banning STRs completely disregards his vision of welcoming people to cottages and hotels. Eliminating them could hurt our landmark status. Why would you move here and want to change Tufts' vision? The biggest losers will be residents when home values plummet over 20%, Mr. Webster, or more if recession hits. Businesses lose when hundreds of millions of dollars in tourism impact yearly disappears. And yes, the resort loses, in my opinion, because they're the biggest beneficiary of STRs with the incredible human advertising that does for the resort, supports events there, and most STRs spend boatloads of cash at the resort and come back as guests or residents. I support enforcement of rules and regulations. I'm a centrist on this. I'm not on either side. But this is a power grab by three council members with no facts and understanding of the consequences. It saddens me. STRs are how people visit world-class destinations, and we will soon not be one with this ban and be competing in the world with one hand tied behind our back. I love Pinehurst and the resort and our residents. This is the opposite of what's good for Pinehurst, its residents and the resort. The massive damage this causes, the village will outweigh any gain. The divisiveness you are causing this community is unforgivable, absolutely unforgivable. Listen and use facts and not emotion. Your job is to bring the community together, not tear us apart. I am ashamed. Why can't, I'm shaking, I'm so upset, why can't the five of you agree on a course of action instead of, it looks like three council members are conspiring with the Friday group and resort to get an outcome? Why don't you work for all 18,000 residents and not for yourselves? Don't be so selfish. Be better. Listen to the P&amp;Z board and their common sense center solutions. They spent hours debating facts and came out against the ban. When you ask people not to invest in your community or visit, they will listen. Be careful what you wish for because you'll get it. I love welcoming visitors to my neighborhood. I have no STRs. I have three STRs in my neighborhood. I have no interest in owning one. Maybe it's a teachable moment for newcomers growing up here. We knew our jobs as residents as part of a dynamic welcoming committee, and we're taught the word welcome. Try it sometime when an STR visitor comes. Ask them where they're from. That's what we do in our neighborhood with our three. We have finally become what we always wanted to be, the home of American golf, and a ban throws it all away. People have choices about where to vacation, live and invest. We will not be one of those choices. We have competitors. They want them. They will no longer come here. Don't take tourism, USGA, and US Kids Golf for granted. It can all disappear. I support Tufts' vision, a vibrant tourism community. I support the center's position of the P&amp;Z. I support a level playing field that Tom Paschley mentioned. I learned a new term today, over tourism. I don't think that exists, by the way. I think that's, we want tourism, we're a tourism community. Please work for 18,000 residents and work together, the five of you. That's your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drum. Jennifer Stoddard, followed by Phil Sonia, followed by Debbie Leiler.
Hello, members of the council, the public. I'm Jennifer Stoddard. I live at 41 Shaw Road Southwest. I'm a 17-year full-time resident of Pinehurst. I do not own an STR. For those of you who have come up here and said that the only people in favor of STR rights are people who own them or work for them, I derive no income or any business interest in STRs. And yet, here I am, and I think there's a lot of people like me. I do want to say before I start my comments, there was a speaker earlier named Jeffrey Hines, and he used the term "our ordinance." And I'm just wondering, did he, did you have a part in writing that? Is he still here?
Ms., I'm sorry, your comments.
Okay, I know I'm not allowed to ask questions, but I do want that to be noted and I want it in the record, he used the term "our ordinance," not your ordinance. I know he's not on the council.
Please make your comments to the council.
Okay.
Please go ahead, please.
I'm up here not because I own an STR, but because I'm a believer in property rights and I'm a believer in personal freedom. This is not an HOA neighborhood. This is a town. These are people who own properties and did not sign an HOA contract so their neighbor can tell them what to do with their property. Also, I heard someone earlier today say, what would happen to our medical community if we have too many tourists here? Well, I am a medical doctor. I am part of this medical community. And I can tell you, I've got a four-month waitlist to get into my office, and that's pretty much true for all of the specialists in town. If you have been to the emergency room lately, you know you might wait 24 or 48 hours to get into our hospital. Tourism is not a problem in terms of the medical community's economic backbone. Also, I've heard people come up here and say, oh, but if you lived across the street from an STR, then you know what we were talking about. Well, I do live across the street from an STR, and I've got one down the block one way and one down the block the other way. I find the tourists that come to our town to be lovely people from all over the world, golf teams from universities, families visiting. I know that a couple of our neighbors named Christine and Buck, they built a little guest house. They do STR from their main house and their guest house, and I think that's how they're financially able to stay in their home. I think otherwise they wouldn't be able to stay there. Pat, they had a sign for you in their yard during your run for office. They supported you. And I know that their STR is necessary for them to stay in their home in our neighborhood. I would just say, you know, there's nothing wrong with taking people's trash cans to the back of their garage for them. I don't know if people here don't do things like that. I do that. Three of the houses next to me, they're not STRs, but they're part-time residents. They're more empty than they are occupied. And I do a lot of taking people's trash cans back for them. I don't understand why people can't do that for their neighbors, why they want to make a big deal out of it, pass a law or something. My problem, neighbors are the ones who are there full time, frankly. And I've got a little story about finding one day on the road, the badge for a child who had competed in the kids' golf tournament, and it had his name and it had his hometown. And I went home and Googled him and mailed it to him so he could have it for his scrapbook. And I would just say, maybe if we just tried to be more welcoming to these people, we'd have a better community all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Sonia, followed by Debbie Leiler, and that's the end of the list.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for all your time tonight, and I want to thank the council members for also allowing me to brief them a path forward here earlier this week. My name is Philip Sonia, 29 Bedford Circle, 15-year resident of Pinehurst. I engaged in the short-term property rental discussion, really on accident, as invited here, as my doctoral studies are in public policy with a distinct focus on property rights and economics. I'm the same guy in February that told you be in a recession by mid-July and that the downturn adjusted overall average would drop by 20% before the fiscal year. Both occurred. I'm really sure I can hold my own in any economic discussion at any level, and I welcome that discussion here locally. We are in a challenging period. I do not want to see my community wasting funds on legal issues that we can resolve together, embroiled in a negative issue in national headlines, nor do I want to see our community separate financially from a passionate yet rass decision, and I absolutely do not want to see infighting in my community. Communities communicate, and we need to communicate to cooperate. I have a simple request. I would like to establish and lead a format for all of us to simply communicate rather than continue on with these monologues. May I suggest that we simply establish a format for us to unpack this together and process a solution set? Please provide the hall or a room and a dry erase board for just such an event, and let's start building a way forward together as partners in our future. I am, again, offering my time and access to studies and oversight in academic institutions. In the current debate, I can tell you, one side's been open to this communication and one side is not. So you may have heard more anecdotal information from one side. I am more than willing to meet with any party to discuss each and every one of these items. And in that one instance, where we did have both parties, we collectively made significant progress by championing both sides' perceptions and challenging both sides' assumptions. Let us be brave and actually talk to each other. I have reviewed the literature on this subject in depth, over 671 studies at this point, and after a significant consultation with public policy planners, economists, academics, and representatives from both sides, I recommend we take a tangible approach that's been used worldwide. It employs voluntary compliance. It opens fruitful communication between all parties at the micro level, leverages third-party oversight, and empowers you, empowers you, our council, to either provide awards or to take punishments based upon the platforms that the STR elements exist upon. In the words of Alar Ostrom, whom earned the Nobel Prize in Economics in 2009 and whom my work's based upon, "In the absence of formal laws, the absence of formal laws is not equivalent to the absence of effective rules." I'm recommending a course of action for us all to prosper. That's right, win, win, win. Dr. Ostrom's seminal work, Governing the Commons, The Evolution of Institutions Through Collective Actions, is a foundation for results based on public policy for a dilemma we are currently challenged by. I'm not saying this is my preferred way. I'm saying that every single public policy institution in the United States concurs that this is a preferred path to create a well-informed, efficient, and enduring institution. Communities communicate.
You're beyond three minutes. Please try to wrap up.
I would like to have the hall so I can help you devise a way forward. We have a way forward that we can devise that without a cost to the community and help us avoid the actions that we're heading towards. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Last, but hopefully not least, is me. I want to preface my remarks, I'm sorry, Debbie Leiler, 80 Azelia Road, and I want to preface my remarks by restating what the mayor stated at the beginning of the meeting, which is that the legal framework surrounding this debate is set by North Carolina law and the courts. The village's options are very limited, and I just want to remind people to keep suggesting that there is a middle road, that it's a very hard path to find within the state of North Carolina. I want to remind everybody that Pinehurst Incorporated in 1980, and the following year it adopted its zoning code. That was in an effort to stop the aggressive development efforts by Diamond Head, the then-current owner, and to take control of Pinehurst's future. At that moment, in 1981, it was a recognition that Pinehurst was no longer simply a resort town. It had become a municipality within which a resort operated, a municipality with a year-round resident population with all its attendant needs. The zoning code set boundaries on different types of land use, different densities of development. The belief that the village would enforce the zoning code gave homeowners confidence in the value of their property. Today, Pinehurst residential neighborhoods are under attack by a new form of land use, a commercial activity masquerading as residential. Unregulated growth of short-term rentals threatens the fabric of Pinehurst residential neighborhoods with strangers coming and going every weekend, and it promotes a level of tourism that threatens the very heart of the village's allure, its quaint, quiet charm. Further, a lack of enforcement of the zoning code means that no Realtor can guarantee to a potential homeowner whether or not that property next door or down the block will remain a residential property or whether it will flip. The logical conclusion is that those people who are able will look elsewhere. They'll move on. No one is going to buy a home in which to raise their family or in which to retire when there is no guarantee that their neighbors won't become visitors cycling in and out of town. The issues created by short-term rentals are not unique to Pinehurst. Same challenges are being faced by municipalities across America and, in fact, around the world, from Newport, Rhode Island, where they just adopted the exact same ordinance, no short-term rentals in single-family zoned areas, to Amsterdam, to Venice. Many are adopting the concept of sustainable tourism based on two factors, a recognition that cities and towns need to protect their residential neighborhoods to both maintain the character of the areas and to protect the housing stock for those wishing to live and work there. There's also a recognition that there's a limit on the number of tourists any given area can handle before the very experience which drew the tourists in the first place gets destroyed. Tourism is a powerful force. Some people compare it to a fire. It can cook your dinner, or it can burn your house down. Sustainable tourism is needed as a way to develop and manage tourism to ensure that the positive impacts are maximized while preserving the quality of life for all residents. I applaud the council and the planning staff for taking steps to try to achieve this balance between residential need and tourists' desire to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list of persons who had signed up before the meeting. A few are not here, and, excuse me? Be the will of the council to hear any other comments, folks that haven't signed up? That'd be fine, sir. Would you step up? And may I have your name, please, sir?
Yep. I'm Nick Vickers, 7 York Place.
Nick Fisher.
Vickers, V-I-C-K-E-R-S.
Thank you.
You may remember me from the last meeting when I spoke close to last. I appreciate your allowing me the opportunity again. I have a short-term rental right in my front yard, and my position has really moderated a lot thanks to the dialogue in this room over the past two meetings. I came with four, what I think are modest proposals. Two of those are in the current amendments already, so I don't need to propose them. The other two, the mayor had noted, are not allowed in the state of North Carolina, so that's fine. I'll take two out of four. What I'm concerned about is, in the Table 851A, if I'm looking at it correctly, we had limited the categories to three zones where short-term rentals in the initial proposal. Now that's up to about 12, so there's been a significant expansion and reduction of the limitations. And yet, there's still a lot of angry voices in this room. It almost seems like a microcosm of modern American politics where people seem to think who wins is who shouts the loudest, who spends the most money, who has the biggest-name lawyers on their side, and I'm going to sue you about this. You better watch out. That's not what those flags on that wall stand for to me. One of my favorite things to do in this town, and I've only been here two years, is to sit at the bar and chat with the local tourists. A lot of them are from the resort. Some of them are at short-term rentals. They could be the one next door to me. And when they find out I actually live here, they say, that must be amazing. You know what? They're absolutely right. It is. So I'm asking both sides of this room, whatever side you're on, please, please, please do not ruin that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vickers. Are there other persons who wish to make comments in this open hearing? In the back, the gentleman in the light blue shirt first, please, and then followed by the gentleman in the black shirt. May I have your name, please, sir?
Scott Roman.
How do you spell the last name?
R-O-M-A-N.
Thank you. Scott, go right ahead.
I haven't been in person in front of a bunch of people lately. If I was on a Zoom call, this would be a little easier, but, you know. Anyway, you know, I've learned tonight that apparently I'm a Chinese investor who never comes to Pinehurst, but I bought my comes to Pinehurst, but I bought my, I have two homes. Both of them I do short-term rental. I've been doing it since 2008, 15 years, probably 500-plus reservations. I've had, one time, I received a phone call from a neighbor in all this time. And I don't, you know, I'm not a distant owner. My license plate in Connecticut is Pinehurst. You know, I come here as much as I possibly can. I love it here. The only reason I'm here is because I'm able to afford to do it, because, you know, when I first visited Pinehurst, my realtor, when I was going to buy a small condo, said, "You know, this is a great community where you can buy a house and rent it through our rental program," which is what I did, and it worked out pretty well. And, you know, my goal was to not lose too much money. Somebody commented about how hard it is to make a profit. It's really hard to make a profit. And one of my houses, I break even, quite honestly, except for last year. Last year was a really good year. But already this year, it's not. Like, this fall is slow, and maybe it's because of the number of properties that are now on the market. But the, you know, the market, like, there's not enough demand to keep 500 short-term rentals going. There's no doubt it will, you know, reduce over time. People realize how hard it is to actually, you know, pay your bills. But anyway, I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, I'm not a distant investor. I love this place. I come here all the time. I've hosted my son's high school golf team here four years in a row. You know, my kids have been able to experience Pinehurst. So many U.S. kids' families that I know from New England come down here, many of which, by the way, you know, my neighbor's got three or four more years coming here, and he said, "You know, if I couldn't rent a house there with my family, we wouldn't go because we can't afford to rent multiple hotel rooms, and we don't want to stay in a tiny little, you know, smaller hotel room." So, anyway, you know, I know my neighbors. I have two homes here. I know my neighbors on both streets. You know, I do everything possibly that I can to welcome my guests, treat them well, and take care of my neighbors, make sure that they know if there's a problem, they can call me right away. And every time, the first thing I'll say to my neighbors when I come down here is, "Has anything gone on that has troubled you or bothered you in any way?" Never, never, never. So I'm not sure where all the complaints are coming from. I'm not saying that some don't exist, because there's probably a house out there where they're packing people in that they shouldn't be. And I'm in favor of, you know, some of the permitting, because I do think the village should have a way to, you know, put some controls around people who are abusing what they should be doing. But I don't think the right answer is just to ban it across the board or in single-family neighborhoods where I've been operating for 15 years, and I eat dinner with my neighbors when I'm here. You know, they, we get along great. They know, like, you know, I can't wait to live here full-time. I'm not quite there yet.
Mr. Roman, you're over the limit here a little bit here, if you wouldn't mind.
Just tell me when I was at three.
Thank you for your comments. For our records, could I have your address, please?
Sure. 45 Briarwood Circle.
45.
Briarwood.
Briarwood.
Circle, yeah. Yep. And by the way, my homes are taken very good care of. You know, I do hire people to come in and renovate, so I've heard comments like that tonight and all. But anyway, that's all I wanted to share.
And Nick Vicker, could you remind me of your address for our records here, too? 70?
7 York.
Are there other speakers? Yes, gentleman in the black shirt. Mr. Colini, hold on here, please. Thank you.
How we doing?
Mark, good evening.
Thank you.
I believe this is Mark Elliott.
Yes. Sorry, I didn't get to sign in earlier. I'm not going to take three minutes. I sent you all a letter today. I just want to speak as from a business owner. I benefit from all vacationers, and I benefit from all the locals, too. Probably 30% of my business is vacationers, are catering. We actually cater in short-term rentals on a very regular basis. I employ at Elliot's 45 people, provide medical, 401K plans. I'm a small restaurant, and it will have an impact on us. We're not going to close. We got closed during COVID. I survived, so I just hope you'd consider all the citizens and the businesses of this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, there was one other. Yes, Mr. Colini?
Thank you. My name is Charles Weaver Colini, and I am on the Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and I represent Old Town West. And I can say before the council today that the residents in my area of the village are overwhelmingly in favor of the restrictions on short-term rentals. And as someone who practiced law for 45 years, I've heard threats of lawsuits before. I just want y'all to not to take that into consideration in making a decision which is going to be beneficial to all the residents of our community. Talk is cheap. Recently, there was a case decided by the Third Circuit Court of Appeals, federal court, which basically said that municipalities have a right through their zoning to make restrictions. And all this talk about deprivations of Fifth Amendment to taking of property, this is not the taking of property. The people that own the short-term rentals have the ability to sell them for whatever the market will bring. We're not supposed to function as a village council to worry about folks who took the chance in acquiring a piece of property that it might one day be outlawed their use. They have other uses for the property. They can live there. They can move from California. They can come here. They can live here. They can enjoy our, our community. So I'd ask you, please, just do the right thing. Do the right thing for Pinehurst, which is looking after the full-time residents of this beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colini. Are there any other speakers?
Hi, my name is Christina Barnes, 38, Spring Lake Drive.
Going to have to have you repeat that. I can't hear you.
You can't hear me.
You speak right in the microphone, and someone can help you.
Christina Barnes, 38, Spring Lake Drive.
Right ahead, thank you.
All right. Sorry. So of course, the second I get up here, my mind goes blank, and that's to be expected, isn't it? It's great. I stand on the center, pretty much on this topic. I don't want short-term rentals next, you know, surrounding me. I've said this before in the past when I've come here. But then, like, the gentleman that was just here, that, you know, he's kind of responsible with his rentals, and I get it, he could sell it. He could rent it to a long-term renter, or he could use it the way he's using it. That was actually insightful. Oh my God, why am I so shaky now that I'm up here?
Please stay close to the microphone. Thank you.
I'm just going to leave it at that because my mind has gone completely blank, so.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing and enter into a regular Item number 12.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I move to adjourn, public hearing number two, and re-enter the regular meeting.
Second.
It's a motion by Lydia Bosch, second by Councilmember Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll move now into the regular meeting and any discussion that the council wants to have with respect to the comments from the public about short-term rentals.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I suggest we take a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, please.
All right. We'll take a break. We'll come back at 7:38. I'll give you eight minutes.
Thank you.
I want to restart the regular meeting. We are at agenda item number 13, which will be a discussion for the council reflecting on their staff report and any of the comments we've heard here in the public hearing. And so I would start with any questions of Darren on behalf of the staff report and his comments earlier tonight with respect to short-term rentals. We're not going to decide this tonight, but as I indicated earlier, and we've talked about this at council, our job now will be to come and begin to plan what kind of regulation we wish to have and evaluate all the important information we've had over recent months and weeks and the last couple of hours. So are there any questions of Darren at the moment on his staff report or any other findings that he might have or questions you have? Looking left and right. Jeff or no? Lydia, go ahead if you have a question.
Uh, uh.
Bring that microphone close, Lydia.
Yes. Where do we start after months of this? And I have to say, I am so sympathetic as I listen to both sides. And I'm not answering your questions like responses to the staff report, but I sure would love to try to find a way to work through this. And I noted it in the P and Z hearing. I noted it tonight. There are a lot of people who say, please try to work this out. I think I hear people say things that are kind of, the law does not support what some people say. And I feel like we haven't given the public a legal framework. We've, John, you tried to tonight with things we can and can't do, but to me, and maybe it's because I'm an attorney, but a fundamental thing for me is constitution. And we've got a North Carolina constitution, and I don't, I have not been hearing much about that. I said two weeks ago that for the first time two weeks ago, I read the Vacation Rental, Vacation Rental Act. And I believe there are things, provisions in there that are applicable that just have not been a part of the discussion. You know, when I looked at the draft ordinance last night, and there's some, I don't know if you call it preamble, some of the whereas is, and I don't know, I don't know if there's a factual basis for some of the things in here. And we can talk, we can talk about it more later. And then just specifically, just one thing specifically that came to mind was when we said you can't hold a special event in a short-term rental, and we didn't define that. Is a special event a bridal luncheon? Is it a family? I don't know what a special event is, but that seemed kind of vague to me. But after this, after we've lived with this for so long, I feel like we've got two choices. The two, the two sides get together and work it out. We try to find middle ground, like I've been saying all along, or it's going to court. And we'll have to talk to Mike about that. And that just breaks my heart that it would go to court because I think it will. Somebody else said something to the night, this has harmed friendships. And that is just, that is so horrible to me. I have friends sitting out here that now say they're not my friends anymore. And these are people I have known for years. And to me, this is just, I can't say inexcusable, but this is so beyond troubling to me that this has harmed friendships. So that's why I would like to find a way to work this out because I think a lawsuit is going to be even more divisive for this community. So I think that's all I have to say right now.
Yeah, I, we'll find a way to work this out. That's certainly my objective, and I think all of yours. And people talk about litigation. I don't know that we will create anything that would create a legitimate reason for that sort of litigation. And I'm hopeful we'll find a way successfully through this.
Well, you know, John, that's a great point because at the very start, where's Jeffrey Heinz? I don't know if he's still here, but one of the early meetings, Jeff, Jeffrey came to me and he said, we've got to find balance. We've got to find balance. And I agree with that. And he also said that, and I think we all said, whatever we come up with is not going to make everybody happy. And some, I believe somebody said that tonight, and it's true because this issue is so controversial that it's going to take some compromise. And, you know, I'm sorry that Phil Sunya has been limited to three-minute soundbites for the past few months because I think he's got a proposal that seems reasonable, and maybe he isn't the one that should do it. But it just, there's, there's got to be a mechanism for working through this, whether, you, you Army people, maybe you know about these things, but it just seems to us there's got to be a mechanism where we can work through this, where we can, in an organized fashion, work through it instead of having this tug-of-war with public comment.
Okay. I'll move this way. Pat, did you have some thoughts and comments?
Yeah, yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, one, I, I found the comments tonight, I think when you take them collectively, I think there were some nuggets there of some possible routes other than, other than the ones we've sort of discussed. We have, we've discussed the ordinance that we've talked about here at the council that a majority forwarded on to the planning and zoning board. And then there was the planning and zoning board version. The version from the council was to limit STRs to three zoned areas within the village. And the planning and zoning board was to not limit them to anywhere, allow them everywhere. So something's got to be done along those lines. But I do, I had a couple of observations. Number one, it relates a little bit to what Lydia said. I think it's important that we take into account that the people on one side of this issue and the people on the other side of this issue, without really getting into names, I don't think either of them love Pinehurst less than the other person. I think they all, but they both love Pinehurst. They have a different vision, a different policy vision of where the community is going and where it should go. These are disputes that are not limited just to Pinehurst. And we heard from various people, this is, you can just Google the topic, and it's all across the country. Newport News, Sedonia, you go wherever you go. And everybody's trying to find a solution. And so we have a sort of a hodgepodge out there now of solutions and communities. I, I think that there were a couple of straw men that I would like to sort of put to rest. One is the idea that we're either or, resort community or residential community. No, we're both. I think we're both. It's a little bit like the old Miller Lite beer commercials, you know, tastes great, less calories. Well, we are both. We, and the other thing is this idea of we've always been a short-term rental community. We haven't always been a short-term rental community. Years ago in 1901, when they opened up the Carolina Hotel, Wilbur and Orville Wright had yet to get their plane off the ground at Kitty Hawk. Henry Ford had yet to get his Model T on the road. And there weren't many paved roads. There was no interstate highway system. The way people came down here was for a season. They got on a train from New York or Boston or Philadelphia. They took that long ride down and they embarked and decamped here for two or three months, for a season. No one got on a train on Friday afternoon and went back on Sunday evening and had a short-term rental. It didn't, it didn't work like that. The reality was it was seasonal. So we're, we're, we both are resort and residential. We started out seasonal rentals. We are now, have developed over the last several years to a group of short-term rentals. And for many, many years, there was a small group of short-term rentals in this community. I don't, you can't, you know, we can't register them, so we can't actually put a perfect number on them. But let's say for many years, there were less than 100. And then the emergence of these platforms, Airbnb is, and VRBO, both well-known, the emergence of those platforms very much monetized and made efficient the idea of renting out your home on a short-term basis. I have nothing against those platforms. I'm, I wish I was someone who thought of them many years ago, as people made a good living in the marketplace and the system sort of works. What we, what happened to us here in Pinehurst is that there was this exponential growth of short-term rentals. That's why we're discussing this issue for the last nine months, not because anybody here on this council, when we met in our retreat last December, not one of us said to the other, boy, we really need to roll up our sleeves and get working on these short-term rentals. I didn't, and I didn't hear it from any of my colleagues. I found one small note I scribbled to myself in my December retreat book. It said VRBO policy issue. But come January, all of a sudden, and since January, every two weeks, we have heard from residents. And we have heard regularly from them in emails and letters, phone calls. If you're like me, you may have had a few knock on your door and want to talk to you at your home about this. And that is what's gotten us to this place. We, in February, early on, I think Darren, you probably know the date, there was a point where you came before this council and you talked about 11 policy objectives that we should sort of look forward and take this on systematically. And we sort of marched down that route. And then low and behold, came a Wilmington Court decision. If you look back at some of our meetings in February and March, we were talking pre-Wilmington. And some of us were talking about waiting for that court decision. The court decision came down and said, you can't do this, you can do that. So what did, what did we do? We took the things they said we can do, and in June, we passed an ordinance that dealt with conduct and nuisance and noise and all those issues that affect not just short-term rentals, but the village at large. And that passed four to one. Then we were faced with what, how do we address the short-term rentals? And that's when we started focusing on what are our options? And as the mayor said and others have commented, our options are somewhat limited by that ruling and by the state statutes. But that's the framework we have to work within. There's things we know we just can't do. And there were things that Wilmington did that I'll never quite understand, the lottery they were running. I mean, it just was not a productive way, I think, to manage the short-term rental issue. So we're faced with a lot of input, serious comments by most people. I at least, I took them as very serious comments from a lot of people and strong opinions by a lot of people. These are the folks who interact on a daily basis on this issue. So I think we can take what we've heard, sort of review the bidding where we are and see if there is a way to thread the needle that both preserves, preserves that character and tradition of the village of Pinehurst. We, we heard tonight from the president of the resort, I thought that was, those were very sort of pertinent remarks on the view of the world. And we hopefully can come up with some conclusion in the next week or two weeks or so that will be something we can take back to our residents and say, listen, this is what we came up with. We know we can't make everybody happy if it doesn't work, but perhaps we can put something together that will make people rest for a while on this issue. That's where I would like to get to. So I hope we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Pat. I think that's a very helpful timeline you included in your, some of your comments there. Jane?
Well, I don't have that much to add to what Lydian Patton said, except that I'm grateful to have heard from everyone who attended tonight. I agree with Pat that many of the comments that we heard were made quite seriously and that people are deeply concerned about this issue. I think it's going to be incumbent on us as a council now to work together as a team, to work together as a team in order to come up with something that is going to be able to fit into the very tricky Rube Goldberg of what the state allows municipalities to do and gets to the problems that people have expressed, gets to the heart of the matter as well as we can. But I do think that teamwork is going to be very important.
Jeff Morgan.
Bottom line up front, I think the solution to this is voluntary compliance, trying that first. And if that doesn't work, the state legislature giving villages, towns the authority to register and punish owners. We don't have that now. I recognize that. We don't have that power. But I think it's incumbent on us to push that forward because that is a real solution. And I would support going for a good solution. And in the orthopedics world, we have a saying of do the, do the last surgery first. And the idea there is resolve the problem with the first, with the first go-round. And I think that would end up solving it. So that's the bottom line up front. Let's talk about a couple of things. I do appreciate the comments there, the historical aspect. I know we did a survey also, and that had, had a couple of different aspects to it. One definitely showed that folks that are around short-term rentals, there was a higher propensity of having decreased satisfaction rates on, on issues. Lots of behavior things that popped up also showed that greater than 50% of the people that were around short-term rentals did not have an issue with that. But let's focus on where we got here. As Pat mentioned before, it's behavioral issues. There's not anybody sitting here right now that wants idiots to come into our village and make buffoons of themselves, be loud, be boisterous, and cause problems for our It's behavioral. So if we have a behavior problem, how about we attack behavior? How about we address behavioral issues? If you have a bunch of speeders, you don't ban cars. You address the behavior. And so I think we'd be wise in doing that. And so far, the best solution I have heard on here, in my opinion, is trying a voluntary compliance with all the other ordinances that we have done. I have supported every single behavioral ordinance that we have brought up because I want to address behavior. I don't think going with a ban is the right step at this point in time, the hand in the single-family residence areas here. Other aspects to this, yes, I do have a concern on the litigation. We'll listen to what Mike has to say later on. I'm still open book on, on a lot of that. But I don't think we have gone to the extent we need to, to try to come up with a solution other than a ban. I don't think we've gone to that degree and that we need to look at that in a more comprehensive manner. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Want to make sure our village manager has a few reflections if he wishes. Not right now.
Nothing bad. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any questions for Darren, though? Anything further from him on the, on that? We're going to talk to you later about other things, too. All right. I think then we'll, if it's a will of the council, we'll take our thoughts as communicated here tonight and start to work on some solutions with the staff direction. And we'll commence that right away. Any other questions or comments on this issue? Otherwise, we'll move on. All right. We're in the regular meeting. We're in item number 13. We'll go to 14, and that's surplus assets. Jeff?
For 14?
Am I not?
Surplus assets. Surplus assets.
Sorry?
14 surplus assets.
Item number 14, I think we're at, on the agenda right now. Item 14 on the agenda. Item 14 on the agenda.
14, right, yeah. I thought you said 13, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Brooke?
Yeah, so we've, every once in a while, we have a need to come to you to get your approval to sell our more expensive capital assets. And in this case, we have a surplus fire truck that's been replaced that we'd like to get your permission to sell. Go ahead, Brooke.
Perfect. Yes, as Jeff mentioned, we are currently operating under ordinance 17-02, which authorizes the village manager to sell certain surplus assets that have an estimated market value of $10,000 or less. Most of the items we sell are well below that threshold. We sell our items on the village's GovDeals website, which is an electronic auction that's very similar to an eBay platform. We sell the items that we no longer need and no longer have a use for. And this time, as Jeff mentioned, we do only have one item, and that's a 2002 KME Predator Fire Engine. So this item may reach the $10,000 threshold, and we hope it does. And we want to ensure that we have clear authority from you to sell that item. There is a resolution for your consideration tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. This is one of the more standard items that we bring to you.
Clarification, I'm thinking back over the years. We've done this before, but I think I recall in one instance with a fire truck that we actually gave it to another community. And I don't know whether that's still possible, or we have anybody who wants this particular fire truck, which I'm sure still has useful life of some sort. And it would seem to me that $10,000 is a fairly low threshold there for a fire truck. Am I off the mark on the?
Yes, well, the $10,000 threshold, we are expecting it to exceed $10,000 in proceeds, which is why we have to get your permission to sell it.
Right, right, okay.
Right, exactly.
I had a question. This is not that fire truck next to the fire department? You know, there's like an old fire truck?
No, Annabelle, it's not. This is a replacement fire engine.
Why, you wanted to buy that one, right?
No, I don't. I just noticed it, and when I saw the figure 10,000, I thought, "Well, maybe that's what it costs."
That's just the threshold.
That's exactly.
Again, that's not what we're asking for. That's the threshold where I don't have authority.
We have to give them approval in case we get more.
That's right. If we expect to receive more than $10,000 in this electronic auction platform, then we have to get your permission to sell it.
I'm fine with this.
Jeff, Morgan?
I think this is fine. Don't need to blame it.
Would you like to make a resolution, make the motion? Item number 14.
I move to approve Resolution 2223, authorizing village manager to dispose of certain surplus capital assets as presented.
That's a motion by Jeff Morgan. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Pat Pozzello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Brooke, thank you very much. Move on into item number 15.
I think most, if not all of you are aware of the fact that over a period of several years, we've undertaken an effort to try to replace or upgrade the signal, rather than doing poles and a cable across.
Graphic light there.
Yeah, we're doing the cantilever arms, you know, the nice green ones. And DOT accommodates our requests to do that, but we have to pay the expense over and above what it would cost them to do their preferred solution. And I mentioned that we've been pursuing this over quite a number of years, and we typically try to look for opportunities where DOT is already planning to do work that we can piggyback this effort to make the improvements on. And so right now, and in very near future, they'll be doing the work at Memorial and Page, those two intersections on 15501. And so we have this opportunity to upgrade those signal solutions. Actually, Page, there's not one there now. Go ahead, Jeff.
Is that okay, Mr. Patton? Would you like to add to that?
In order to do what he just said, we just need you to adopt this budget amendment. Thank you.
When would this take place, and how long would it take?
They're looking to start February, March timeframe of 2023, and I don't know how long that project will last, but they'll both be going on concurrently, so six, nine months.
My only question, oh, you're thinking that long?
I'm guessing. I really don't know, honestly. I didn't ask the question.
That is a big, it's sort of a busy area, that's all I was asking about.
Yeah, and you are correct. That in and to itself will cause it to be a longer project because of all of the traffic rerouting they have to plan for as they move through the various steps.
This program has been ongoing for some time, and it's very well coordinated. We take advantage of it whenever we can, and over time, all the signage signals and all that sort of thing look a lot nicer because of this effort. I think it's very well done. Any other questions of Jeff, Patton, or Brooke?
I do have a question for Jeff Patton. I don't recall ever seeing a diagram of what they're going to do. I know they're going to do, we've been talking about it for a while, but I don't ever recall seeing.
The?
If you've got a picture, you don't have to.
Yeah, I don't have one here.
Just get a picture to us, because people are going to be asking. It'd be nice to have it at our disposal.
I can tell you that the Memorial Drive 15501 is a four-pole layout, whereas Page Road will just be a two-pole layout.
But they're going to be doing some.
As far as the colors, there'll be the S's.
I think Lydia is asking about what the new road configuration is going to look like.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Page Road is going to be lined up to be more of a direct T intersection, but yes, I think we may have, we have some drawings of those.
Yeah, and we shared those with council maybe three years ago.
Sometimes.
It's been a while.
Yeah, we can get you that.
That'd be great, thank you.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is this okay with Duke Energy? I was just checking.
No, yes, of course.
Okay, I think I need a motion on item number 15.
Yeah, I move to approve Ordinance 2216, amending the ordinance appropriating funds for operations of the village of Pinehurst for fiscal year 2023 regarding revenues and expenditures of the general fund.
Second.
That's a motion by Pat Pozzello, second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck, Jeff. Let's go to item number 16.
Go ahead, Jeff. Come on, you did such a great job of that last introduction. Okay, so what we have before you, and I've got Mike joining me, too, to help answer any questions that you may have. This is a road dedication ordinance that also includes an acceptance of a forfeiture of a financial guarantee. So this is a bit of a unique situation. Windjam 7 is the developer of Villas at Forest Hills. They have completed the build-out of the very last road in that development, which is Wingfoot Road. There is a punch list of some items that need to be completed. We are currently holding a cash financial guarantee in the amount of $37,875 that they had deposited with us some time ago to ensure that the infrastructure was completed in accordance with the plans and in accordance with our standards, engineering standards manual. In conversations with them, they have offered to forfeit the financial guarantee in order to have the punch list items repaired more expeditiously. Mike has run the cost estimates to make the needed repairs. He created the punch list. And we are very confident that we can accomplish this within the amount of dollars that we currently are holding from Windjam 7. We feel we can get this done more quickly, based on the fact that the asphalt resurfacing bid, which you will be considering in the next agenda item, includes, we included this road in there intentionally, knowing that we would have the appropriate crew on-site mobilized here that could expeditiously do the roadwork repair. The balance of the infrastructure work, we have contractors that we work with on a regular basis that we can bring to bear to complete those items. In the interest of getting this done as quickly as possible for the residents living on that road, we feel like it is to their advantage to go ahead and allow us to accept the financial guarantee forfeiture, use those dollars from Windjam 7 has deposited with us, complete the punch list items. And we would do that at a later date, not much later, it's really when the resurfacing project is coming into town, which will be sometime in November, is when they arrive, and then depending on how they cycle through the village as a whole, they'll be, they would take care of this at the same time. The other items, we can move forward with if you adopt this ordinance to accept the road and the financial guarantee. Again, I think, we believe this is the best solution for the residents on the road. Windjam 7 feels it is the quickest way that the punch list can get done because of mobilizing their contractors to try to come down here and do some of these very small things are going to be challenging for them to get done. So we would suggest and recommend that we adopt the ordinance, accept the financial guarantee, let us get the road in, back up to 100% shape, and the other couple of minor, more minor repairs, if you will, that need to occur. And then we move forward.
Jeff, just taking it from your memo here, it's $37,875 we have, that's the guarantee, but Windjam is going to cover costs up to $45,000. Is that correct? So we're not going to be out of pocket that $13,000?
Yeah, that is correct. That was a negotiated arrangement at the time, before we had the cost estimates in hand for the road resurfacing project. We wanted to make sure that the taxpayers were not on the hook for any dollars related to finishing the development. And Windjam 7 put it in writing that they would commit up to $45,000. They alluded to the fact that they probably would do more than that if it was needed, but they didn't want to give us a blank check. So that's why they put the kind of the caveat on there. But after running the numbers, we don't think we're going to need those additional dollars. We think we can do it with what we have already in hand.
So this will be for repairs of the road and then surfacing of it through Fred Smith or whomever, and we'll talk about that in a minute.
Road has already been resurfaced up to its full level. But there are some repairs that are needed, some areas that need to be milled out, and some areas that need to be resurfaced.
Yeah, there's some areas that are a little uneven, I would say. We would mill that pavement out, lay fresh asphalt down, and then there are also some sidewalk repairs that need to be done, some pretty significant cracks in some areas of the sidewalk. There's one area of the sidewalk that's actually sunk a little bit, and I think is a bit of a trip hazard for people. So it's things like that that we would go in and repair.
Sounds like a well-negotiated situation to me.
And Mike was involved in the discussions with Windjam 7 when we were having those. And so we're confident that we can get this done. We're confident we can get it done as, more quickly than they can, and we think this is in the best interest of the residents of Pinehurst that live on that road and will ultimately not cost the taxpayers of Pinehurst, you know, anything, just other than, you know, some staff time here.
Might we end up with a little cash left over that we keep?
It's quite possible, and that could, well, so actually, I'd say likely, that would compensate for the staff time spent putting the contracts in place.
Other questions of Jeff or Mike on this?
Oh, Joe, go ahead. I've got one, too.
Jane, did you?
Yeah. From reading the memo on this, it sounds like there's possibly some homes have not yet been built on the street?
No, it's 100% built out. I just don't know if they're all owner-occupied right now.
Okay. Because if they had been built, maybe we should wait until the construction was completed.
Yeah, our standards require, or, yeah, require, I guess is the right word, 75% built out before we'll even consider accepting a road from a development. This one is 100% built out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Pat?
Remind me, where is Wingfoot Road intersect? What road is it intersecting with?
It comes off of Shadow Creek Road, which comes down from, what is the road up there? Is that called Forest Hills?
It's all behind Lawn and Tennis.
It's up in the Lawn and Tennis area.
It's right in the kind of backside of Lawn and Tennis. We're going to be actually paving a road right, literally right across the street from this one. So it was, it's right there. So from a mobilization standpoint, it was easy for us to do it.
It's back in that neighborhood, then.
Yeah, you kind of go through Lawn and Tennis, and then you enter into Villas at Forest Hills.
No question.
Town home development. Been under development for 10 years.
More than that. Actually, look, the plans were approved in '05.
Yeah, I would say it's '05, yeah.
So this wraps that whole development up.
Okay. We have motion number 16 here, I think.
Yeah, I move to approve Ordinance 22-17, accepting a petition for dedication of streets within the village of Pinehurst and amending Chapter 7, Schedule 2, and Schedule 4 of the Pinehurst Municipal Code as it pertains to regulating traffic on the streets presented.
Second.
That's a motion by Matt Pozzello, and it's second by Jeff Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Move on to item number 17.
All right, two things going on here. We did put our annual resurfacing package out for bid, and Fred Smith Company was the highest, or was the lowest bidder, not the highest. Unfortunately, that lowest bid is still a little bit higher than what we had budgeted for resurfacing work this fiscal year. And so what we're asking you to consider is two things. First is a budget amendment to increase that budget amount up to what's needed, and then second, authorization to enter into that contract. Anything further, Mike?
Sure, yeah. So we, the village owns and maintains about 108 miles of streets in our limits. We have a KPI, a key performance indicator goal, to resurface four miles every year. So as Jeff said, we recently put out our FY23 resurfacing package, which includes four miles of roads to resurface. It's actually just a little bit more because we added Wingfoot Road onto it as well. These roads are scattered throughout the village. They are selected by a committee comprised of Jeff, Jeff, myself, and Megan Skellerup. And the primary tool that we use to select the roads is our pavement condition survey. We just had an updated pavement condition survey that rates every single road segment in the village submitted to us this past March. So we used our updated pavement condition survey, selected four miles of roads. We also do periodically get requests from residents about, "Hey, when are you going to pave my road?" And in those cases, we go out and evaluate those, even if it may have a slightly higher rating. So we put our package together on August 30th. We received four bids from contractors for the project. The low bid was submitted by Fred Smith Company in the total amount of $1,352,951. I believe I put a bid tabulation in your packet. I would just note that the second low bid was over $1.7 million. And we also had two bids that were even higher than that, in the 1.8 and 1.8 range, and one that was over $2 million. Fred Smith Company is the firm that bought out Riley Paving back in October of 2020, and they continue to maintain an office in Moore County, up in Carthage, and an asphalt plant there as well. They actually completed our resurfacing project back in FY21, and Riley Paving had completed it for many years before that. Our Powell Bill budget amount for FY23 is $1.3 million, and that includes $572,000, Brooke, I believe, that comes from the state. And then the village actually supplements that with about $728,000 of village funds for the total budget of $1.3 million. So you can see with that, the low bid actually exceeds the total amount of funds that are available. So if we want to keep up with our goals and resurface four miles of streets this year, we will need additional funding. We also use our, in addition to the resurfacing, we use our Powell Bill fund to rehabilitate our road shoulders after the resurfacing is done. And at this time, I would estimate a total cost, or a total need, I guess, for our Powell Bill program of $1,472,875 to complete the full scope of work on the project. You just accepted $37,875 from the Windjam Development cash on hand for this fund. So in order to complete the project, we would need an additional $135,000 of fund balance appropriation. If that is approved, our plan would be to contract with Fred Smith in the amount of But we've done this in the past. We would also ask that the motion include that the village manager is authorized to execute change orders to add additional quantities to the original unit pricing with the overall amount not to exceed $1,472,875. So if we go higher than the contract amount, that gives Jeff the authority to add to that, not exceeding the total budget amount. The contractor is ready to begin work if we award the contract tonight in early November. And with that, I'll end. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
You covered the last contingency that was in my mind here about allowing Jeff to have a little discretion if it rounds up one way or the other. Good, good. Questions of Mike or Jeff from council?
Mike, remind me, all right, we think cost of paving is going up because of gasoline, petroleum prices, right?
I'd say it's gasoline and labor and just inflation in general.
And didn't we run into this last year too? Wasn't the bid we got higher than we expected for some of these reasons? I'm just, I'm just, I'm thinking this is an ongoing concern with petroleum problems.
Yeah, I think we were actually expecting them to be a little bit higher last year, and we were fortunate. Barn Hill contracted, Fred Smith was actually our second low bidder last year. So, it was the first time in many years that either they or Riley did not do the, the contract.
I think we were under budget last year.
Yeah, so we were able to do it last year, and we were pleasantly surprised with that. Our budget was 1.2 million in Powell Bill. We bumped it up in anticipation of them going up to 1.3 million, but unfortunately, it's not enough to, to do four miles these days.
Which, to keep up, you've got to do it. Thanks.
And there are questions from council. I think we have a motion for this on number 17.
Okay, I, yes, I, I moved to approve ordinance 22-18, amending the ordinance appropriating funds for operations of the village of Pinehurst for fiscal year 2023 regarding revenues and expenditures of the general fund.
That's a motion by Pat Pizzella. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bosch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries. Okay. Brooke? Oh, there's two on this one, that's correct. Thank you for reminding me. Kelly was telling me that earlier. All right. So, that's the first part of that. Jeff Morgan?
I moved authorize the mayor who doesn't need to execute a contract with Fred Smith Company for the fiscal year 2023 annual road resurfacing project in the amount of $1,352,951 and authorize village manager to execute change orders to add additional miles at the original unit price with the overall annual amount not to exceed $1,472,875 in sum total.
That's a motion. Motion by Councilmember Morgan, seconded by Councilmember Hoagman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Mike, thank you very much. Brooke, Jeff Batten, thank you. Okay. I think we're going to go on to number 18, and we'll get back to the Pinehurst South Small Area Plan. Darren, you're going to?
And during, during your last meeting, you had an opportunity to talk about the small, small area plan, and the direction we got from council was to try to take the depiction from the low-density plan east of Highway 5 and the high-density plan west of Highway 5 and merge those into one plan for your consideration. So, that's what Darren has done, and Darren can take it away.
I think you just described everything. So, the major.
Darren, I wanted to, as you're beginning, I wanted to thank you for including some additional materials in your staff report for us to look over with respect to transportation and, and traffic volume and this sort of thing. It was very helpful on that. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I was hoping, I was hoping it was helpful. And you can see, we, we did do the, the task that, that we requested. So, you can see there's a heavier density on the west side of NC5, so you can see multiple families. So, it's a mixed density development on the west side. And then on the east side, below it, below Blake Boulevard and below really this mixed use or commercial area, whatever, you know, we, whatever we do in this area, we did show, we, we have the single family, we're showing the single family in that particular area. I got nothing else.
Okay.
I got nothing else to add on it, other than, you know, I've, I've said this before, the plan is illustrative. The real work of this goes into what you're seeing. If you, if you're looking at the materials that are going before the planning and zoning board right now, with respect to the regulating plan, with respect to the land use table, with respect to the lot standards, that all informs this plan. So, what would happen is, you know, we're going to come back with some standards that are going to show, you know, we're going to start showing in, in land uses and things that would kind of reflect the development pattern that is on that area. And from that, what we'll do is we will, we're going to start working on tomorrow in Village Place and start, you know, more managing and refining the uses that can be allowed in various districts within Village Place. I see the same thing, doing the same thing here. We'd be narrowing up some of the uses.
Darren, I think it's also true that we heard concerns about the commercial development that was depicted in, along Monticello Drive in the low-density plan, and so you also substituted that here as well, right?
Correct. Yeah, Monticello realignment, sure. If you saw that.
Showed the option there on Monticello that did, did not include that development down, down along that entire stretch there.
Wait a minute, we talking about that little triangle right where your pointer is now? Just along the road, along Monticello?
If you see where Darren is moving his arrow back and forth?
Yep, the dotted area.
Yeah, the, the other depiction showed commercial development all along there.
What shows commercial development there?
The low-density plan.
The, the what plan?
The low-density.
The low-density plan. The lower-density plan did.
And now it doesn't show anything?
Except for those two parcels that are across from commercial development right now.
The, the ones in the, next to the letter B, is that what you're saying?
Yes. So, you see, these would be potential commercial office buildings, but what, what's happening is if we, we realign Monticello, Monticello this way, that then could add into the potential harness track area for if, if the village decides they want to move in that direction for any other use, that would provide us with additional lands for buffering, things like that. But it's not a requirement of the plan. The plan doesn't set that in motion.
Right. Because it's in the plan, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
That's right. I mean, that's kind of the beauty of, of this too, is it, you know, showing this realignment of Monticello, doesn't mean it has to happen, but showing this means that if we do choose to do that in the future, it, it will be consistent with the plan.
So, you're, you're leaving up in the air whether we would realign Monticello?
Right, yeah.
And we're not proposing any development there?
Either leave it the way it is or realignment.
And we're not proposing any new development there that might not allow us to, to do that. I see. Okay, okay, all right. That's helpful. Other, other questions? Especially on the sort of west side, east side of Highway 5?
Yeah, I've got, I'll call them four questions. I'm up in the left-hand corner, proposed core area. What does that mean?
That would be the, kind of like the activity area where you'd have some restaurants. We, if you look at.
Isn't that where the Boys and Girls Club is now?
That's correct, but we're showing a potential coffee shop, potential restaurant, those type of uses in that core activity area.
There were some nice renderings that the consultants did, kind of, you know, street level views of what that area might look like.
Yeah, if you look at the bird's eye rendering, we did a, we did a detail in the bird's eye rendering of what that, what could look like that. I think we have, we had a potential incubator or a farmer's market type of, farmer's market type of activity within that area. That has actually gotten pretty good from some of the property owners in that area. That's gotten, or at least one of the property owners in that area, that's gotten real positive comments from, from that person.
Are those dark, black, I'll just call them buildings? What do they represent?
They represent potential new development.
Okay. And the, I'm looking at that, I'm assuming those are roads that you're drawing in there in the gray, little chalk marks?
Correct.
And is, is that, am I reading that correctly? As I look at the key, that, that's proposed open space in those three little pockets?
Correct.
And one of them has a little building in that. What is that?
That's, that little building, I think we've shown in our rendering as being a, a coffee shop. So, the intent would be some type of retail coffee shop type use in that area.
And the rest is proposed open space or park, whatever?
Open space, yeah. Again, it's, if, if you look kind of at the, the bird's eye, which, if I pulled up the bird's eye, it would, you'd be able to see exactly what the thought is.
Is the Boys and Girls Club that gray building?
Correct.
Okay, so that's sort of, that's standing alone as it is. For now, well, but they, haven't they done some upgrades to it lately?
They have, correct.
It's been a big, wasn't there a ceremony or something there? There was some?
They rehabbed it, correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, help me, keep, keep walking with me through here.
Sure.
Proposed multifamily infill. Right now, that is vacant space on the left there where you have the?
I think there's one apartment building in there right now on the west side, and the rest is open zone RMF, multiple family.
It's all zone multifamily. And that's why we, we got the direction for, for you to opt for the high-density on that side, was it was more consistent with the current zoning.
Okay. So, we're going down Trotter Drive, and Trotter Hills is on our right, and so we would be, God, I drove, drove down there a month ago. So, we're sort of adding a little road there for those multifamily infills?
Potentially. Again, we can't, I mean, when we start to allow road patterns, we're looking, when, when we're laying them out, generally associated with a road pattern as a development. So, when you create roads like that off a trotter, you create areas where you confront buildings on.
And if we go further left where the map cuts off, are those single-family homes on the other side of that?
Correct.
Okay. And, but this is, is, it's proposed multifamily infill, but you're telling me it's currently zoned for multifamily?
Correct, that, almost the entire assemblage over there, with the exception of probably the, the front edge along NC5 is, it's zoned multiple family.
Okay. All right, let me go back across the street. The, the Blake Boulevard intersecting with Highway 5 there, right across some pinecrest coins, that is currently a road that, I guess it's the ABC?
Correct.
Store, that little gray area?
Yeah, I know, yeah, that is the ABC store.
Okay. So, there is currently that sort of road in there, and then what is being contemplated or thought of is the, is extending that road all the way to Olivia?
Correct, to show a future potential development pattern, because right now, those parcels that are in there, they don't, the parcels to the south, the undeveloped parcels, which is about 40 acres down there, they don't really, they don't have access out to 5. So, the way, the way the Mahaly parcel is going to have to be served is through some of these connections back to the north through Blake Boulevard. And you see how it's laid out? Again, we, when we start to lay out roads, we're, we're putting building patterns adjacent to those roads.
Yeah, and it, I mean, this, the depiction is trying to, you know, flesh out what might be an acceptable solution. I mean, maybe a way to think about this is that, you know, when a developer comes in, they've got a clean slate on undeveloped parcel or a series of parcels, as, as, as is true in this case. They'll come to us with a plan and with their own let, road pattern, like the cottages at Village, Village South, what are they called? Cottages at Village South, stuff that's depicted there in, in the southeast corner.
Okay.
In that case, that was all an open undeveloped tract, and the developer came to us with their preferred road development plan and.
Okay, as we go.
Actually see that depicted in dashed line.
I'm following that possible road. As we go into the letter G, are those single-family detached houses?
Correct.
Okay. And, and then those follow as you're going towards underneath H there, those are also single-family detached?
Correct.
Right? And then as you go back up to the right, there.
Single family.
I'm gathering those are also single-family detached?
Yep, that's the concept, single-family detached.
Okay, so, and that's around that park area. All right, and the last thing is, well, I'm, I'm not a big, obviously a proponent of the service area on right off Highway 5, so I will just make that very clear. The, describe for me one more time the flex office. Is that the remote working? You come to work a few days, it's hoteling, we used to call it at one time. What is the flex office?
Flex office are things like where multiple people could, could be working in, in an office. So, you see some of these, they're like incubators, they're, they're similar to incubators, so uses like that. So, it's really to help people, the concept is to help startups and things like that try and get established.
Is it, do we categorize it as office professional?
We would categorize, we would categorize, categorize it as office.
Again, this, this is a depiction. It's not going to dictate that outcome, and ultimately, you know, Darren and team, working with planning zoning board is going to bring you a form-based code that is more about what structures look like and how they interact with, you know, in the human dimension, you know, at street level, and whether or not there's a flex office or some other office use.
Correct.
Who knows? But it's an idea.
We could put more definition and, and flesh on what a flex office actually, how it would actually operate.
I guess the last question is the, is the flex office now state-of-the-art? Is it passe? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to remember, I mean, there was a time I remember when hoteling was the wave of the future for a while for, this is before COVID and all that, and then it didn't take off much, so.
I think, I think there's a couple of things going on there. One is a recognition of people that work remotely or work from home that sometimes need a little bit more space to do something. Maybe they need to bring somebody in for a meeting or something like that. And then the other thing was this notion of incubator type of stuff, you know, that business startups that want to have a place to start out.
The incubator was something that we sort of ruled out in the, recently, right?
We ruled out the innovation hub.
Innovation as opposed to incubator.
Yeah.
All right, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
The flex office idea, you know, that, that may or may not go forward. I mean, it could become something else. I understand that just to be a.
There's a market.
Yeah, and of course, it'd have to be, somebody's got to own the building and run the, run the office.
Correct.
Have some, have some business machines and things there that people could, could use or conference rooms and this sort of thing. So, that's, it's around these days, it may change. It may change.
We have one on Magnolia Road in the, in the village.
Yeah.
The old sport gallery building, I think is what it is.
Yes.
To the second floor, same concept. You just have a bunch of startups that were written out, individual things, they have a conference room they can share.
I remember that now. Yeah, I've seen it on the, on the signs.
Share the coffee machine.
Now, what we've done here, of course, is put residential back into the, into the mix, especially on the, on the east side, right?
Correct.
And, and you tried to use this, this green. One of the emails today talked about STRs on the one hand, but also raised a question, could this park area somehow fit into the harness track world over there? In other words, put the park closer to where existing residential communities are up and down Monticello and even the cottages when they're completed there. To my, my knowledge, I didn't see any, I'm not aware of any property that we would have, that we would want to use in that way from the village, and I don't think there's any independently-owned property for that either. So, the park down where it is in H is probably where it has to go?
I, I don't think there's realistically a big enough chunk of ground up there closer to Monticello that's undeveloped right now to accommodate that same use.
All right. That was my one comment. Jane, you may have some questions on this, and Jeff, Morgan?
My concern about Pinehurst South is traffic capacity on Route 5. And so, I, I read through the new traffic materials that you kindly provided to us in the novice agenda. And it looks as though a two-lane road, and, but they're talking about a gussied-up two-lane road with left turn lanes and stuff, can take 18,300 vehicle trips per day. And then in the, in the plan itself, on page 64, it says that Route 5 right now has about 20,000 vehicle trips per day. And it's operating at a level of service D during peak hours on the road. That's not for the intersections, that's the road, which means that you stop and go and you drive real slow. And then it says that the amount of new traffic on Route 5 that would be generated, and this, this section of the plan was written when they had. and this, this section of the plan was written when they had two proposed plans for Pinehurst South, the high density and the low density, was going to either be, when you got all done taking out reductions for internal capture and pass by and all this other stuff, was either going to add another 8,000 or 9,000 vehicle trips per day on Route 5. So we're already a little over the 18,300 because we've got 20,000. This is all, I guess, approximate, but I'm just, this is what's in the materials. Now we're going to propose to add another 8,000 to 9,000. I don't know how many vehicle trips are contemplated by this new version, the preferred plan. But that's, that's my question. How are we going to get, how are we going to get this to happen with the traffic capacity we have on Route 5? It seems to me that we should be looking at the, a plan that generates traffic as frugally as, as we can. And so that's why when I question about the mixed use, it's because it's, it's putting, seems to me, two traffic populations in one space. But, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. So help me understand how we're being frugal with traffic generation with this plan.
That was not the goal that, we were coming up with a goal that creates a mixed-use development area.
I know what Gridlock is.
So do I, I go down there quite a bit.
Well, I try. And the only thing it says in the, in the plan itself is that, number one, this area will grow over quite a long number of years.
Fifty-plus years.
And so nobody will notice it getting more clogged on the road, which I didn't think was particularly helpful. But, and then it talks about the DOT plan to widen Route 5 from Blake Avenue South to Route 1, which I don't see how that helps us quite the reverse of yet, may. And then, but there are some improvements planned by DOT from Blake Avenue North to 11, which is, which is great, but I don't know, is that going to be 50% traffic increase more? Is that going to solve that? So, so are we being frugal here with this plan for traffic generation?
It's a, it's a, it's a good question. I would good-bye to go back to the facts you stated there. There may just be an error in that plan, but I'm quite certain that the traffic volumes on Highway 5 don't approach 20,000 until you get near the trestle.
Are, are not right?
Yeah.
They don't approach until you get near the trestle?
Near the trestle is where we, is the only place on Highway 5 where we have traffic levels that are that high. And I'm not sure they're even 20,000, 17 or 18 sounds more like it. I'm sorry?
This was the question I had at our last meeting.
Yeah.
Was where, where are we coming out with, with the traffic? And I guess the traffic must flow differently at different points along Route 5.
Well, I mean, people are coming and going to specific destinations. And it just so happens that, you know, most of that traffic is on Highway 5, or a high, high percentage of that traffic that's on Highway 5 is, you know, heading down Morganton and going over to Southern Pines or, you know, eventually out to that side of Aberdeen or, or what have you. But every road has different traffic levels at different points along the road, depending on what the predominant traffic patterns are. To go to your other question, this plan helps to mitigate and minimize the traffic impact by the very nature that it's mixed development, because there's internal capture. It also mitigates traffic impacts by including a fair amount of residential. Because as I've observed before, while it's true that residential development is what actually causes traffic, it's commercial development that concentrates it. So imagine, if you will, instead, these homes being built, I don't know, by West End or something, right? And, but they still want to come to this commercial development to do their business. So it's all going to concentrate there. So along with everybody else that wants to use that business. Commercial development has, creates higher localized traffic levels than residential does.
And will we have, when will we have a better understanding of whether we think we really would ever move the public works here or not?
You're going to take the first step and then an analysis later on tonight?
I'd like to understand that better than I do now. Thank you.
I think, Jane, one of your questions, Sue, was what we discussed last time quite a bit. And that's this whole issue of what is the, I use the term infrastructure. What's the capability of infrastructure?
That's right.
And the volumes and all this. And it's just very hard to get around that, to come up with any kind of a a number that can be, have confidence in over time. It's just very difficult, I understand that.
Till you actually get actual development proposed, that's, I mean, it's easy to project on residential because you know what the average, you know what the average trips are for, for a, for a single-family dwelling unit. And you know what they are generally for apartments. But in, with those little boxes that show different types of, you know, there's different types of office uses that, that generate different types of trip, trip gen. And the size will, you know, the amount of square footage that are in there. So it's just, it's hard to come up with any real accurate estimate until such time as you start to see development actually coming in and then you can measure it. Remember, when we do any major site plan or any, some of the zone changes, some of the conditional zone changes that we're doing, there's always a trip gen that we make to be submitted as part of that. Because we know, we can look at what that proposal is, what that square footage is, and then we know. But we know, we know that anything in here is going to add trips. There's no, there's, that's indisputable. Everything's going to add some, some amount of trip. We just don't know, based on the future development pattern, how many trips are going to be added. Now, we do know that the areas are zoned for NC and OP. That, that will allow for a certain amount of development to occur presently. Same thing across the, across the way on the west side. You've got a bunch of area, a bunch of acres, tens of acres zoned for multiple family. That's going to develop a certain amount of trips.
Right. So it might help, be also helpful to go back and clarify or remind you all that all this land is currently zoned a certain way. And as I mentioned before, you know, the analysis we've done showed that the comprehensive plan suggestion for how to develop this plan would result, would result in less density than the current zoning allows. And this plan, this proposed plan, results in less density than the comprehensive plan theoretically allowed. So, and keep in mind, these are all property owners that have rights. So, that are currently wrapped around the current zoning. That doesn't mean you can't change zoning, but you, you know, we, you, you, I think you do have an obligation to make sure that they have a reasonable return on their investment of some sort.
Any of these pieces of property, would they be considered being downzoned by what we're talking about?
Potentially the single-family to the south.
Family maybe.
Because I believe that area is zoned OP down in that, down in that neck of the woods.
Did you say on the east side or the west side?
Oh, I'm sorry, on the east side.
East side, single-family.
Right, right around Block H there. I think that might be zoned OP right now.
Across the street, those proposed single-family residential infills, that is single-family.
That would be, that is zoned multiple family right now. So if that would, if that would develop to the zoning, there would be additional multiple family in that area. So that's a discussion that we'd have to have.
Hold on a minute. Where it says proposed single-family residential infill, right, in F? Wouldn't that be downzoned?
That would definitely be downzoned.
Okay, that's right, I thought you said it was the other way. So you've got two areas that look like they're slightly being downzoned, downzoned. And the proposed commercial infill along NC 5, obviously what's missing here is that, that's along the railroad track. That's a, you're going over a railroad track to get to that. Isn't that correct?
No, you're going, no, you're going down that proposed extension of Page Street, really.
Hold on, I'm looking at our net.
Oh, you're, you're looking at the, okay, I'm coming down from, from Blake.
Okay. So I'm, I'm driving up Highway 5. On the left, we're proposing commercial infill, excuse me, we're proposing single-family residential infill. On the right, we are proposing commercial infill, but that commercial infill is on the other side of the railroad track. Am I reading this correctly? Because there's no track on this map. That's one of the fallbacks of design.
No. Oh, you're right. We had put the, that's a good point, that shouldn't, that bubble shouldn't be there because we, we put the low density, we put the low, we put the low-density land use in that area. So that bubble...
Darren, can you put your cursor on that spot?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Make sure I have...
This bubble...
Pat's asking about...
That bubble, this is one that Pat's talking about.
Yeah, that's the one of them, yeah.
We're showing, we, we put the low density. And unless it's just that one building, there might be one building here, which would be a commercial, which is a commercial office building, that might even be the one that's currently existing.
So that could be one building and the others are single-family detached?
Correct, that's the way it's shown.
So there's one building there that's commercial infill. And the others, including those single-family detached as you move up G, are on the right side of the railroad track?
Yeah, right here, so, yeah.
Okay.
You follow that, right here, correct.
We've been looking at this area over time and depending on which plan, but as a place for commercial development. And so we have that here in B, C, D, and E in those segments, right? We're retaining that. We're taking a little bit of the ability to do commercial away, well, not just a little bit, but some, by putting more single-family in here. But that's, that's, that's the choice, you know? Where do we go? And then Jeff pointed out, the density implications here actually are quite surprisingly less than we might have, we have under current zoning or the comp plan itself. So if density has been a concern of all kinds, this sounds like...
It's always a concern. I, I just, but I, I think this is a pretty reasonable balanced approach to managing growth. And it's not going to be perfect. And we're going to have to live in the future with that traffic impact. And DOT is going to have to find a solution, you know? But that's, and of course, we're partners with DOT and the solutions that they come up with, but that's going to wind up being their problem to solve, but...
Doesn't this satisfy the comp plan? I mean, as you go through the comp plan and the pages you gave us, this seems to satisfy many of the components of the comp plan.
It is, I mean, the only deviation probably to the comp plan would be the single-family kind of located on the south side, on the east side of this, this area. This is really the deviation that we talked about at the planning and zoning board level as well.
And, but in the comp plan, in many places, people said they wanted different housing opportunities.
You would have the, if you, if you did something like this, yeah, the comp plan also talks about trying to, trying to get a diversity of housing types within the community. You would, if you did something like this, that would meet, kind of meet that goal of being able to provide some of that, some of the diversity of housing types. And, you know, you could talk about other, you know, other types of housing.
To your point, while, while it's a deviation from the depiction of the, of that small area or focus area in the comp plan, there are other elements of the comp plan that we can point to that say that this is ultimately consistent with a broader intent.
Open space and the walkability and...
But, and I, I think what the whole, you know, one of the whole goals was to create this mixed-use area that not only just benefits this particular area, but, you know, there's people who live down Monticello that would like a place to go to a coffee shop or like a place to go to a restaurant in this area without having to go other places. Same thing from some of the Lake community. So you're hoping that you can create enough economies of scale within this area that it will, you know, attract some of these adjacent neighborhoods that they can walk to, that they can ride their bike to.
Darren, we've come through a lot, a lot of iterations. As you look at this, which we kind of developed two weeks ago, you know, the kind of concept, how does this overall, in your judgment, meet the needs of the community? And how do you, how does this fit in? Is it, are you comfortable with this? That, I know you'd be comfortable with different plans on it, but are you comfortable enough with this? That it's viable, workable from your point of view and...
It's workable from my, my point of view. I, I think it's going to be, this will be a little bit different plan to put together than we are for, for Village Place because, you know, as you start to put the regulating plan together for, you know, this area below Blake Boulevard, you know, we've got a bunch of proposed roads. Those roads may or may not be there. So whereas, whereas with Village Place, we have existing roads that are going to be, with the exception of stuff around the brewery, that we can, that we can develop off of. So I think the challenge in this one really is going to be that area below Blake Boulevard. We can, we can propose roads and things like that, but, you know, just as a development, I think that will, if somebody wants to come in and develop it, I think that is going to be the challenge. I think it's workable, but it's going to be a challenge.
Now, I think some, some of us may have questions related to other things that might happen internear this, this community. So we may not be prepared to approve this tonight, but I have to say, I'm, I'm quite more comfortable with this than I was two weeks ago.
Just like, you like, you like bringing me up here, don't you?
I love that shirt too.
It's all about the shirt.
My Ternbury Wood, where's my Ternbury Wood?
We're not there, we're not going to get that, I guess, I don't know.
Let me just...
Go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to say, if my notes are correct, I like to think they are, what I heard is we have downzoned from the current zoning in many of these areas. And then we've downzoned from the comprehensive plan in many of these areas. I thought I heard that.
Yeah, it's not really technically downzoning.
Well, I'm using that phrase meaning that we have reduced the density. And so we're moving in a way of less density, which, and we're moving in a way that there's, there's homes, which I, I understand the, the theory of it has, generates less traffic as opposed to commercial. Because commercial, if you get a popular, if you get a popular store, you're going to have a lot of traffic, okay? If you, but you still have one house with the two cars in the garage. So, so I, so I, I mean, I think this is a step in the right direction. I obviously have one issue about that public services area. Because I think that would flip the chessboard on, on the traffic issue. This is a little better on traffic. But as Jane points out, you know, all the data shows traffic just gets worse. I don't know what to do about that, other than not trying to do as much damage to what's currently there. And the lower density heads that in the right direction. Anyway, that's my thoughts for the moment.
What do you, what do you need to be able to move forward with it? What do you need to be able to move forward with it?
I, you know, I guess, boy, I'd like to resolve that issue about putting the service area on Monticello. I just, to me, that, to me, that upsets all the rest of it.
It doesn't say it's going to happen.
I know, I know that, I know that, but it, but it's, that's the only thing that makes me hesitate seeing that there.
I can pull that bubble off really...
Here's the thing, you, you haven't seen the facts and analysis that might ultimately lead you to say that that's the best option.
It could, but, but the reason I'm so hesitant about it is, is it's right there at Highway 5. And that we have all, one thing we've all agreed on, Highway 5 is ground zero.
Traffic's already on Highway 5. And it's driving through, all that traffic's already on Highway 5 and it's driving through residential neighborhoods to get there.
Well, yeah, but now you have a home base.
Something's on Highway 5. There's nothing you can do.
And from the current zoning, this will actually decrease some of the traffic on there. Okay? From the current zoning, if it's developed that way.
I say that, it's a downzone from the current zone.
And so there's been accommodation for this previously. I feel like I'm in a Peyton Manning commercial. Just not quite right. Keep working on it.
Peyton Manning?
Yeah, I don't know, whatever insurance company that is, you know, it's, it's, it's just, you know, keep working on it, man, okay? At what point in time are we saying, okay, we have enough, and they can work from it from there? This is not a final plan. We are not writing a blank check with this. Okay?
This is just a first step among many.
Yeah. It's a sequence of events, okay? And so I go back to what else do you need to give them the next step so they can move forward?
I know, I'm very close, but I, I'm, if that wasn't there, I'd vote yes right now.
If what?
Well, I move that Pinehurst Village Council adopt the Pinehurst South small-area plan as presented.
Second.
That's a, that's a resolution you've made up, because we don't have one in the...
No, it's here.
It's right there.
Backside.
Flip the page helps, doesn't it?
Number 18.
There's a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Well, I really did not expect to vote on this tonight. I do want to hear further information that we're going to hear tonight before making a decision.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. We, Jeff has reminded me that we don't have that ready to go for the discussion tonight.
Oh.
But Jeff's saying more to your point, I'm sorry, John. If we look at all of the places that we're going to, let's say there are four of them, and this proves to be the best, then that proves to be the best.
Yeah.
And just the fact that this is listed here as potential means nothing. We still have to decide what the best place is for that facility. And I bet there are going to be pluses and minuses for every one we look at. But just potential means nothing, but potential, and the fact that that road is curved just does not mean it's going to happen. This is just a drawing. What, what are you going to say?
The potential, right now, right now, it currently exists as a potential because it's zoned appropriately. So, because it's zoned PC. So we, whether we have this plan or not, we could move it down there. Still takes, it would still take you guys to be involved in that, but I think we put, I think we put that on there recognizing for anybody who's potentially coming into this area and potentially developing going, you know, if they look at that horse track and go, you know, that's the way it's going to potentially be forever, well, I mean, I think it's kind of a red flag. It doesn't say it's going to happen, but if I'm looking at this plan, I'm a developer looking at this area, and you look at, well, there's a potent, there's a potential service area. I need to look more into that.
That's, that's a good observation. We can, we can just as easily remove that as take it off, and you could still have the same outcomes.
Isn't there an access road that's now being put in there for the cottage club to get, get into the parking facility and the track?
Correct. Yes.
It's off.
It's way up by the railroad track.
It's away from that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't see it on there.
I think it's under the Excel chart there somewhere.
Yeah, more at the top, top center of the page is where that is.
All right.
Darren, any other comments on this?
Nope, I'll take that bubble off.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. All in favor of the motion? Would you repeat the motion, please, Jeff Morgan? Read it again.
I move that the Village, the Pinehurst Village Council adopt the Pinehurst South small-area plan as presented.
And do we need to put a date on this, Darren, or any, any title of what this is?
I'll know, no, I'll know the date, and I'll know what you're approving right now. See, if, wait, I'll know what you're voting on right now if it gets approved.
Okay.
It's this plan, this would get incorporated into the plan. So we would mix this into the plan. This would become the preferred, like we have in the Village Place plan, we have a preferred development plan. This would be the preferred development plan in the Pinehurst South plan.
And it's loaded up in Nova's Agenda, so we have an actual basis to work off.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, questions have been answered. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any, were there any abstentions? Did I hear unanimous vote? That's what I'm recording in my mind. You have a vote, 5-0. You may proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christmas came around.
Thank you all.
And this shows, within the moratorium, we're making progress.
It really does. Now we can really start working on it. And again, this is not the last step. You'll see what's going on at the Village Place. Watch Village Place carefully. I know Jane is, I know Patrick is.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Second.
That's a motion by Jeff Morgan. Oh, you can't do that, sir. Sorry, you're one step ahead of you. Are there any, is there any other business to come to the council tonight by council members or staff? Are there any, I don't see a list for public comments, clerk? None. Is there anyone who wants to speak under public comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and move to the work session?
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
That's a motion by Pat Pizzella. And do I have a second from Jane Hogman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll move from the regular meeting to the work session. And having moved to the work session... You're too fast. Having moved to the work session, we will take a five, we'll come back at 9:00, 9:09, 10, and pick up...